I'd like to welcome everybody this evening to the regular meeting of December 16th. And can we start off this evening? We're going to start with a public hearing for the tobacco and cannabis use on public ways ordinance. So, the ground rules is the notice is hereby given that the town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, December 16, 2024, at 6:45 PM to allow interested residents an opportunity to expect, express their opinion regarding the use of tobacco and cannabis type products on public ways. Information regarding the proposed modification may be found at www.nfield/ct.gov dated this fourth day of December 2024 by Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. Announcing the ground rules for the public hearing are: There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so everyone will have the opportunity to speak. B, after each person who desires has had the chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera time. Please refrain from personalities. So, at this point, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to come up and speak in favor or against the ordinance for the first time? Seeing none, and for the second time? Seeing none, since there was no first, I would assume no second. So at this point, I would say the public hearing is closed. And I'll entertain a motion for 10-minute recess to start our regular meeting.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? How did I do, Sheila? Thank you. Meeting to order, please. Okay, at this time, I would like to call the regular town council meeting of December 16th to order. And can we all rise for a prayer by Councilman Santinella?
Well, Mr. Mayor, our last meeting before the holiday, and tonight's prayer will be by Santa. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the gift of community, the bond that holds the people of Enfield together through every season. As we celebrate Christmas, I pray that each family and individual feels the embrace of love, the peace of forgiveness, and the joy of giving. Let every heart in this town be filled with gratitude for the blessings of life and the promise of hope that this season brings. Bless our children, who remind us of the pure joy of wonder and belief. Bless our parents and caregivers, who work tirelessly to nurture and provide. May they find rest and renewal during this holy time. To all who serve this town, I offer special prayers. You carry the responsibility of guiding this community, and I ask that you lead with wisdom, compassion, and unity. May you always serve with selflessness and a focus on the well-being of every citizen. Let this Christmas be a time when Enfield comes together as one, united by kindness and generosity. May every decision made here tonight and throughout the year ahead be for the common good as we strive to live in harmony and create a town where all can thrive. So to each and every one of you, I wish you a very Merry Christmas. May your days be merry and bright, and may the joy of the season stay with you always, and may God bless Enfield. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands,
One nation, under God,
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. That was very nice. And rule call, please.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Councilor Sikala.
Here.
Councilor Krasati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nissuta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
And Councilor Russo.
Here.
Eleven members are present, none are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire and emergency, there are two means of exiting the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors and a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, out the rear, and again, a safe distance. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 2nd, 2024.
Motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions. And then the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2024.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, corrections, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Two, three abstentions. Okay. Thank you. And then tonight, our special guest is the Board of Education to discuss the pre-K5 school buildings. Welcome, Steve, Charlotte, Andy. I see Mike put a chair out there for him. Thank you, Mike.
You notice Andy doesn't want... All right, if you want me up here.
Listen, Andy's been in the hot seat long enough over the last year.
All right, well, thank you for having us tonight. Before we get right into the presentation for reimagining pre-K5 schools, we just wanted to give you a budget summary update for the terms of the MOU before we went into this. So I'm going to kick it off to Steve now.
Good evening, everybody. You should have a hard copy, basic printout showing you where we stand as of last Friday. There are additional copies, so anybody in the audience, there should be over on the side so you can see those as well. Basically, I wanted to kick this off by just saying we have really good news. If you look, and these are projections, obviously, you know, this is through December 13th, a lot can happen between now and June 30th. However, the overall projections that we have moving forward is that at the end of the fiscal year, we'll have a positive balance of $1.83 million. Obviously, one of the items we're looking at doing is trying to have some money put into our unexpendited fund, our 2% fund. That's $1.56 million. I know from conversations between myself and the Board of Education, one of the things we really want to make sure we're able to do is show our thanks to the town council by being able to start paying back what was provided to the Board of Ed last year. So, that's one of the items we're looking at doing, but again, this is very early. But, I just want to just quickly go through here because I know if I was looking at this, I'd be asking the questions of how did we get to this position? So if you look at the salary account, the salary account has a variance of $2.218 million expected at the end of the year. Those are largely due to open positions that have been open since the beginning of the year and remain unfilled. If you are looking for a position with the Enfield Public Schools, I direct you to our website and our AppleTrack system because we will be happy to go through the interview process with you so that we can look at potentially filling some of those positions. Just before this meeting, I confirmed that that includes 14 paraprofessional positions. So while we do have behavior techs that we have been more successful in terms of hiring, we do have a number of paraprofessional positions open. We do have other positions that are open in terms of speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and things of that nature. Those positions are open, but those services are being provided through contracted services. So the kids are receiving those services, but we had to go outside because, you know, it's a mandate in terms of us being able to provide those services. So I bring that up because that will connect directly to the 300s, the purchased professional and technical services. So whenever we can't hire somebody and we need to provide services, so the dollars are unencumbered in the salary account, but they're overencumbered, if you will, in the professional services account. So those two are very closely connected. And then there's some other open positions in terms of a second special education teacher over at Enfield Street School, for example, in one of our specialty programs. So, I mean, the variance is again largely due to the open positions that we currently have. The other items always come into play. Folks that we brought back may have been less in terms of salary than folks that exited. Myself, salary-wise, is a little bit less than the previous superintendent. So it all comes together, and when you have almost 1,000 employees, you know, it quickly builds to the point that we're at. In terms of unemployment, as you can see, it's in the red, it's a negative $413,000 anticipated. The vast majority of that is the effects of unemployment. So when we, when the Board of Education laid off 127 employees last spring, summer, as soon as you lay them off, while a teacher would typically not be paid over the summer, as soon as you lay them off, they could immediately apply for unemployment. So we have folks that we laid off, we brought back, but because we had laid them off in June, they collected unemployment all summer. So while it was budgeted for, I want to say about $60,000, it was well in excess of that. And, you know, that's, I ran across this exact same issue in my previous district. It's one of those items that is incredibly unfortunate, but that's the explanation for why we are where we are with that. 300s I already talked about, the 500s in the negative are projected to be in the negative right now, about $460,000. That's transportation. And that's not necessarily Smith bus transportation, that's specialized transportation. That's our transportation that we need to spend to, for our out-of-district placement students, for our specialized in terms of they, they're not being successful on their typical bus, so we have to provide additional services, additional supports related to transportation. So, you know, it's often said that if I was to open up a business, specialized transportation would be it. It is the biggest game in town right now, and they can pretty much charge you what they wish, because the demand is through the roof, and there's just not enough folks out there to handle that. The 600s and the 700s, those are pretty typical expenses to date. Supplies, I will say, supplies and property, the budget is not frozen. So I'm going to repeat that. The budget is not frozen. So if a teacher has a supply that they have a need for, a general supply, they have the ability to go down to the office and have it purchased for them. You know, as compared to many previous years, and I'll defer to both people on my sides here, it was very often that the budget was frozen November, December, because of concerns in terms of where we're at. We're not there right now. So if there is a supply or need, they're going out and taking care of it. As a side note, we just went through about a week and a half of budget presentations for next fiscal year. I was incredibly impressed with some of the principals who were coming in and saying, "I've inventoried every single binder that I have in the building. You know, I've inventoried this, I've... I do not need this much money." And they made the reductions themselves. So I mean, that's the depth that we're going to, and I think that's part of why you're seeing some surplus in terms of those lines. They've taken the time to go in there and actually determine the numbers. Lastly, debt service and miscellaneous is a little bit over in terms of the amount, about 20,000. There's two different services that we subscribe to, or that we've added, and that's Shipping and Goodwin. That's our legal firm, that's also going to be our new policy service. So we've brought them online and shifting away from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And then lastly is there's the National Center for Educational Research and Technology. That's actually a company or a portion of my contract in terms of it's a service for the district that, you know, there's 100 superintendents across the nation that are a part of that. I happen to be one of them, so we get to bring the best and brightest information that we came back from that. So those are basically the overall pieces. But as of right now, in summary, 1.83 million to the good. I have authorized some additional behavioral technicians to be hired for the district. We have some of our programs where the behaviors are, have escalated because of the number of staff that we've laid off in the past, so we're starting to bring some of those folks back. I've also authorized some, let me see if I can get this, elementary instructional teaching assistants for some of our, for some of our largest classes. We have fifth grade classes at 28, 29 kids in the class, so they need an extra set of hands in there. We have first grade classes with 28 and 29 kids, they need an extra set of hands. So we're starting to bring some people back in that manner, but while we're doing that, we're doing it with a focus on, we're not bringing these folks back now just to say we're letting you go later. It's the direction in which we want to move in terms of the priority for the overall budget for next year. How did I do?
Did great. Those positions, though, are listed as temporary.
The educate, the elementary.
Right, yes, but they are on our priority list for what we want to do with the budget going forward, because those classes are definitely too large for some of the students to have learning every day in. That's basically, you're good.
Questions on the budget?
And this is just like a roll-up of everything. When you get the actual budget, it's...
Yeah, you're not gonna...
It's going to be double that, right?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's going to be, it's, you are going to receive an incredibly robust budget document. You're going to have an overview. This is like, I always talk about it, this is the highest level you can get at. Then you're going to drop this down a level where all of these accounts are going to expand out, because there's a number of different accounts that go into these. And then you're going to have the accounts that are sublines for every one of those accounts. So if you really want to get into the miniscule, account by account by account, you're going to be receiving that information. We're in the process of building it right now.
So...
With also an explanation of the variance, because it's one thing to just get numbers, but you have to know why the numbers change. So you're going to have a column on the right which explains why did this number change? For example, heating oil is one example, and gasoline for the buses, or not heating oil, excuse me, different district. Gasoline for the vans and diesel oil for the buses. You know, we've already begun looking at that, and we just locked in, and we're locking in at prices that are 40 or 50 cents less than where we're currently at. So we're really taking this by the line. So you're going to get a lot of information. Enrollment, staffing. I...
You name it, we got it.
I feel as though you will be very happy with the amount of information you're going to receive. You may not feel that way because it's a lot of information to go through. But, gotta give it to you.
When do you think you'll have a finalized number of what you're looking to advance payback the town? And the reason I'm asking is, we did have a JOC, Joint Security Meeting last week, and we went through some issues that we would like to address, and the cost is roughly $200,000 for that. I personally was not in favor of lending the board the money. I didn't support any of it, so I never planned on getting the money back. So what I personally would like to do is, if they are going to make a payment this year, which is a year early, I would like to take part of that payment, use it for the upgrades to joint security, and give them the full credit for the amount of... for the upgrades to joint security, and give them the full credit for the amount of money they gave to reimbursing the town, if you guys are okay with it. But again, that depends on if you can make the early payment and how much it would be.
Timeframe-wise, you're going to be looking at, you know, mid to late spring would, would be my best guess in terms of that, because I need to look at things like how much excess cost reimbursement are we receiving back? How much of the grant fundings that we receive reimbursement from? There's also items that we'll charge out in terms of tuition or expenses or services. We need to have that money come back in, and it needs to be put into the books. So, and I said, one of the big factors is obviously, you know, when and if something occurs in terms of outplacements or whatnot. You know, I don't, I would hate to say, oh, I'll have that to you by February or March. I would say by the beginning of May, I'm going to have a really strong feeling about where we're going to end up, because that's about the time where my expectation of the business manager, and she's starting to shut down open POs. Like, if you haven't spent it by then, you don't need it now, and we're going to move forward after. So I would say, you know, after April vacation, beginning of May, I'm going to have a, a strong indication.
Okay.
Much stronger than where I'm at now.
Okay. And this is a one-time expense, so it's not a reoccurring expense, but it's something that the whole committee agreed we need to address. So, well, that's great news.
All right, Roddy here. Thanks.
You know, you don't have to threaten us with that, because Gina's already made it very clear, and I agree with her. Let's make this quick, so.
I'll be a quick question. I want to get in.
Yeah, go.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I appreciate this, right? So what you're going to get to next, again, and I hate to keep saying, but as a taxpayer, I appreciate the fact that you're telling me exactly what you're doing. So before you ask me to spend more, tell me where you're at, right? So I pre, and this is, I think, the learning lesson through all this, if there is one, and I appreciate it. Things change, a budget change, and, and I think understanding where you folks want your budget to go, and there are some things that you can't spend, just because you've had it in the budget in the past, it stays in there. You have different priorities as, as kids change, as education changes. It's good to see that. And again, I, I hope we continue to do this, because I think it's great for the public to understand, especially if we're going to go to a referendum, which we're going to talk about in a minute. So again, when they know when they're spending, they go to vote yes or no on something, that what they vote yes or no on is going to be spent the way that we present that to them. That's why I think it's so important, because again, this is what you're, the next piece you're getting into. And I'll be a front one, I don't think I'm getting a straight answer. I'm voting no. And I'm, so I think that's just who I am, and I think other people are that reason, or they call it unreasonable. But, and I think, you know, I know you're going to get into the Eagle Academy, which I think is very interesting, where there's opportunity, not only to provide a great product to Enfield kids, and to become a regional provider, which has always been the, the ultimate goal of it, where again, we can get reimbursement. So, and then what, again, I think what people don't understand, and I hope you touch on it, I'll stop talking, is the cost, I know it's tough to understand, but the cost avoidance is so huge, and even though you've had a tough run with the budget, it could have been worse if we actually didn't do this a few years ago, when the council and the, and the board worked together to implement this. And again, of course, we kept Enfield kids home. And I think people really do need to understand, so I hope you touch on it. Thank you.
You're stealing the thunder on the slide.
And I also want to give a shout-out to Andy, because I know you laid the groundwork to help get us where it is. You and Charlotte put a lot of time in, and you know, Steve, I mean, he can't go wrong. You guys set it up for him. He's got a cakewalk now, so.
Can't go wrong, Steve.
Merry Christmas, moving on.
I, I don't know how to respond to that.
Speechless.
Yeah, wow. Well, I mean, Santa's here, I mean, I, so anyways, for, for the next presentation that we have, it's, it's sort of the, it's the reimagining of pre-K through 5 schools and what basically could be, and, so that you can follow along. So from my standpoint, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this and, and advance for, as Mike stole some of my thunder, the thoughtful consideration as part of this. And I will just give some segue about, my entry into the district was going through every single building. I literally had a walkthrough of every building, met with all the staff members on multiple occasions, and, and really, the takeaway for me was, I don't think any different than where you folks were before, and maybe where the Board of Education was before, is that we have some buildings that are pretty aged, and we have space issues in some of those buildings. And, you know, certainly, you know, equipment costs continue to go up, but a lot of our equipment is at that end-of-life type of stage, where it, to get a replacement is almost impossible, to get a repair is almost impossible. So now you're looking at full replacement, which elevates the cost. So for this presentation, it's really three possible paths that I would suggest, or that I'll, I'll highlight for you. First is, we fix what we have. The second is, we look at the potential for shifting the district into a different direction, and we'll show you those two paths. Yeah, you're doing a great job, Andy.
Thank you.
So I always want to start off with a little bit about where, where we were and where we, where we've come from. And I think this was probably more for my benefit than anybody else's. But you can see, starts from 1953, and Enfield Street School opening, then you go to 54 with Hazardville, 56 with Memorial having the addition placed onto it, and you have the other buildings that continue to open. Again, historical overview of, of school construction and the additions that happened here in Enfield. To note is that from 1968 to basically 2002, we had no construction, no change, no additions occurring. That doesn't mean that things weren't happening in the buildings, but structurally, the bones of the buildings remain the same, if you will. Then 2002 comes along, I remember this, because I lived here at that time, where we started putting on the gymnasiums onto the elementary schools, Henry Barnard, Prudence Crandall, Enfield Street Parkman, you can see the list there. But you had the libraries, the gyms, computer tech rooms, and things of that nature were added onto the elementary schools. Then the next year, the Head Start Building is built, located sort of right, right next to Enfield High School. And then from 2003 to basically today, you haven't had any construction, you haven't had any additions, you haven't had any, any major renovations to the buildings. That doesn't mean things haven't shifted, but again, the bones of the buildings have remained the same. So you got a 34-year gap there, you have a 16-year gap there, and when you look at it overall, the average age of the schools, that the schools that we're referring to here in terms of kindergarten through 5 is 63 years. Good, sir. So Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education, we have one laser focus on, and that's on education. So what are the benefits? Why are we coming forward to you tonight? So the first educational benefit, obviously, if we're looking at a shift to the pre-K through 5 design, or the kindergarten through 5 design, there's a potential to reduce a transition between schools. So right now, we have kids that transition into a new school in kindergarten, they transition into a new school in third grade, they transition into a new school in sixth grade, and then they do it again in ninth grade. And the reason I want to bring that up to you is, when we go back and we look at some of the educational data, or the achievement data of the kids at those grade levels, there is some concern over the academic growth data and how much they're growing academically in that third grade year. I don't think it's any coincidence with the fact that that's also the first year that the State Department of Education requires us to begin the sort of formalized testing of ESPEC, but we do see some reduced growth in terms of grade 3. If we have the ability to have kids in one building for a longer period of time, you have the opportunity to have an increased time for that school to build stronger relationships with the students, with teachers to build, with the parents, with the community. And I think there's plenty of research out there that goes to tell you that the stronger you have your parent, student, family, guardian type of student relationships built, partnerships, you have increased success for the kids. Increased access to student support services. So imagine being a student who requires support services, and every two to three years, you have a major change in the players who are providing it. For me, I do not change my primary care physician every two to three years. So I, you know, I don't go to a different social worker every two to three years. So why would we, we're having some of that same items happening to the kids, and especially at their youngest ages. You look at reading supports and math supports and things of that nature. We keep having to shift them over and over. Learning spaces designed with current practices best in mind, average age 63 years. The way students are taught today is drastically different than the way they were taught in the 50s, in the 60s, in the 70s, in the 80s, in the 90s. I mean, you can, it's, it is drastically different. You know, the, the classroom of rows, and everybody's sort of sitting perfectly straight, those days are gone. Right now, it's about partnerships, it's about collaboration, it's about small group, it's about open, flexible spaces, it's about having areas where they can decompress when they need to in terms of social, emotional. Disregulation, it, the classroom looks completely different. I will also say that because our classrooms are pretty aged, they have a difficult time supporting the amount of technology that we have in them. You know, our classrooms currently maybe have two outlets in them. You know, one on this wall here, one on that out, that wall there. If you're to build a new school, if you're going to renovate a new school, the requirement is like every four to six feet, you have to have an outlet, because of the amount of technology that we're utilizing every single day. So again, we need to update the spaces for those reasons. I put down school-based before and after-school care, and I think it would be incredibly beneficial for the kids and for the families if their before and after-school care was in the school in which they go. So if you have a K to 5 school, you're able to drop your student off, your son or your daughter before school, because you got to get off to work, everybody's working these days, they then go to school, and then they can stay in that same place for, you know, prolonged period of time after school, and then the parents can go pick them up there. I know, right now, we do have before and after-school care, but it also involves us having to transport around the town, and there's additional costs that are associated with that. So I think, again, it goes to be said, the longer we can hold them in those, those one, that one building, I think the better, the benefit is to the kids. Facilities designed with current age-appropriate safety standards, this is a requirement. You cannot build in terms of renovate as new or a new building unless you meet specific safety standards for those buildings. Obviously, something that needs to occur there. And then the state-of-the-art climate controls and optimal learning environment. It's hard to learn in a 90-degree room. You know, I think probably everybody remembers days where we had to send kids home because it's too hot. You know, ideal environment, kids are comfortable, they, they have a stronger ability to learn. And the last thing, I just, I sort of skipped over it a little bit, and it, it's about the age range. So if you have kindergartners through fifth grade in one school, you have an outstanding opportunity for mentors. So for the fifth graders and the fourth graders to go down and work with the kindergarten first and second graders. Right now, we just don't have that, we have the ability, but it, it's very difficult because of the transportation, because of the proximity to the other buildings. So again, from an educational side, here's the benefits. Anything you want to add? You're, you're my color man.
Those are great benefits.
All right.
Those are all great.
Thanks, Andy.
Sorry.
Okay, so you may have seen this before, but back in 2023, there was a cost analysis done by Russell and Dawson, basically to say, what would it take to repair the buildings that we have? You're not changing buildings. This is what we have currently. What do we need to do to repair them, fix them, bring them up to date? Now, the one thing I will emphasize on this slide, you receive no reimbursement from the state. So this is out of the town of Enfield's pocket, you're not going to be getting anything back from them, and what you'll see is, we have it broken down by level of need, urgent, high, moderate, low, and then you have some of security and HVAC. Which schools are the neediest in terms of how much, how many repairs they need? Crandall is sort of the highest in terms of the $11,266,900, and it's closely followed by Hazardville Memorial. Now, I do want you to note, in the urgent column there, those, a lot of those have to do with new roofs. That's not the case at those two buildings. So that, that's already been taken care of, and yet you still have $11 million that you need to put into one building, and $10 million that you're going to need to put into another building, because there's the structural, the facilities, the engineering systems is the major player there. The other buildings all fall within the range of $7 to $8 million each. Just so you can, I already talked about the urgent, the high-needs area, those are things like boilers and paving for parking lots, additional parking lot lights, updated electrical and fire panels, so there's better communication systems when emergencies occur. And then if you look at the moderate, you're into rooftop ventilators, you're into ADA, so American Disabilities Act access, you're also into heating controls. Many of our heating controls, the card, because it's all computerized now, the cards can no longer be made, so if that card goes, the whole system has to be replaced. Again, significant expense. And then the low-need area, those are like your VCT tile replacements, your ceiling tile replacements, I would say more of the cosmetic type of pieces. For the town and the Board of Ed estimates for security and HVAC, because that was not part of the Russell and Dawson feasibility study, that was sort of a comparison that the Board of Education did as it, as was seen in other districts that went through that work. So it was based on sort of the square footage of those buildings that they did and what their expenses were, and then you bring it back to what the square footage of our buildings and what our concerns are. So that's where those numbers are coming from. And then, so you could see, total amount of money for the seven buildings that you have, almost $60 million. And again, no reimbursement from the state. So if this work needs to happen, it's, it has to happen, and you, we can't submit a construction grant or anything like that. This is out of your pocket. The other item, and I know it's not very big, but it's on the bottom, there's no contingency allocation as, for those dollars. You can imagine what's going to happen when you start opening up a 63-year-old building or a 70-year-old building. So what do I mean by contingency? Come across lead, you have to remediate, you have to cover it, asbestos, PCB caulking, a lot of windows, a lot of caulking, things of that nature. Those dollars are not figured into the 60 million, because I, I went to school to be in education, I did not go into school to be an architect. I started off as an engineer, but, you know, then I switched over to education, but, you know, I do not come from the expertise level of what those costs are going to be, or what you could potentially run into when you remediate that situation, but I just want to make you aware that the 60 million could clearly escalate fast. The next slide is, again, from that feasibility study where they did a comparison for three sites. So they were asked to come up with three sites. That feasibility study, and I know somebody had mentioned to me earlier that, you know, the town council had already approved some of that money, this was back in '23, from what I could find in the minutes, was about $200,000 that the town council back there spent, back at that time spent in terms of the feasibility study. So you have two columns here. Here's your roadmap. Here's option A, option B, again, option C is, you do that previous slide. Option.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I don't. Option A is, three brand-new buildings, you can see what the cost would be for a K to 5 building, you'd see the total project cost is, again, this is from 2023, your reimbursement rate is just under 62%, so the bond obligation for the town would be a little over $78 million if all those numbers are 100% correct. That's a big if, right? Because these are projections, and these are estimates. Now, I clearly understand, and I appreciate the fact that that column of new very well may not be palatable, because that's a significant amount of money, the $190 million for those three buildings. The other option would be looking at, again, three sites, not to be determined by me, not to be determined by these two folks, but to be determined by the people who are doing the study, and the environmental study that goes along with it, to say, here's the three buildings that you need to renovate, you need to renovate them as new, and you're going to have to expand them, because we're going from six buildings down to three. When you do something of that nature, your reimbursement rate goes up, so you go from 61.7. sixty-one point seven-nine to seventy-one point seven-nine percent, you get a little better reimbursement because you're maintaining the ability, the buildings that the state has, that you currently have. The bond obligation for those would be a little over fifty-two million dollars. So you're comparing the seventy-eight million to the fifty-two million? Now, I added a, a line in here because the one building that we're not talking about is Enfield Street, or I would, that's a possible for me is what I'm thinking, but it's the school in which that these folk, the professionals tell us. But if you were to renovate one of the buildings that are vacated, and you were to put Eagle Academy in there, now you have the ability to expand an outstanding program, now you have the ability to have more of your Enfield students come back to district, or open it up to outside tuition that you're charging other districts. If you were to add that in, again, we use Enfield Street, it does not have to be that school, but it'd be about six point six million dollars. I will tell you that if you were to do something of that nature, that seventy-one point seven-nine percent reimbursement rate goes up. There's significant incentives being offered by the state for regional therapeutic schools, and that's exactly what this would be. We would be able to service the surrounding communities, have them send us their kids. Your seventy-one point seven-nine, I want to say it goes up by about ten percent, maybe a little bit greater than that. It's very similar to the early education types of incentives that they're offering right now. So that would go up, and again, you would have three buildings renovated, expanded, you would have an additional building that you renovated and expanded a program within, and now have the ability to bring revenue in. Yeah, let's keep going, because Gina said, go quick.
I wasn't talking about your.
Oh.
I was talking about the.
Was not clear.
Again, I, I want to make sure you have time to ask questions as well. I, okay, as we go into the next slide here, the savings associated with Eagle, Eagle Academy expansion. There's a lot of numbers on this page, so I'm going to sort of try to walk us through all of it. So Eagle Academy currently, in the Head Start Building that was built, that's where Eagle Academy is housed right now, has twenty-seven kids. The program's designed for K through twelve, there is an elementary age, and there's mostly secondary, because that's sort of the age that the kids have grown to at this point. So the current maximum capacity is around twenty-seven students. I want to say we have twenty-six currently in place, or we will have twenty-six after Christmas. The average annual cost for any of our Enfield students, if we were to outplace them instead of having them in Eagle Academy, average is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what is included with that? That's tuition for whatever program we're sending them to, that's all the additional services that they may or may not provide, so if you get speech-language services, if you get OT, PT, if you have a para, they're going to charge you for every little thing, because, especially in a private outplacement type of location, it's private, it's for profit. So they're going to charge you everything they possibly can. And then we are still responsible for transportation, and remember, when I presented the fiscal year twenty-five budget update, we're paying a lot of money on specialized transportation. So again, on average, it depends on the level of service needs for the kids, but on average about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we were to have those twenty-seven kids, or excuse me, those twenty-seven kids, what's the approximate savings to Enfield on a yearly basis if we didn't have Eagle Academy? You'd be spending an additional four million dollars. Now, we do have a student currently that we charge to a neighboring district to attend Eagle Academy. We charge them just under seventy-seven thousand, because I tried, we tried to escalate this because realizing this is going to be a few years before we can get here. So we're over seventy thousand dollars, we charge that school district to send their student to us. So that would be the annual tuition that we would be able to charge other districts. There is no transportation charge on us for them to send their kids to us. So they're on the hook, for lack of a better way of saying it, for the tuition to us, for any additional services we charge them, and they still have to transport the kids to us. So what's the potential maximum capacity? Again, for, for the scenario here that we put together, if it was a Enfield Street-sized school, again, it doesn't have to be Enfield Street, it could be any one of the ones that are vacated, you're looking at approximately sixty kids that we feel as though we could, you know, properly service. Now, that's clearly more than the number of kids we have in Enfield that would need to go to Eagle Academy. So now we are regional, so you're going to get your reimbursement kicked up. So I gave you two examples, because I really want you to think about this a couple different ways. Example A is if every single additional seat, so we have twenty-seven there that I've already talked about, if the other thirty-three seats were all, for lack of a better way of saying it, sold to neighboring districts, you would have thirty-three times seventy-seven thousand dollars, you'd have two point five four one million dollars that you would receive as revenue every year. That's not what's going to happen, though, folks. Example B is what's going to happen. Example B is the first kids we're going to take care of are our own, because this isn't about mon, I mean, this is about money, but it isn't about money. The number one person we owe this academy to is our kids, is our families, our Enfield residents. You should always want your kids to stay in your local community. It's what's right for them, it's what's right for their family, it lets them participate in everything that they can possibly participate in here, versus getting on a bus and traveling an hour or an hour and a half, or whatever happens to be, to go wherever they go. I mean, there's a number of different places we send them to. So while I'm talking about finances, I want you to understand that the real benefit of Eagle Academy is to the families, and it's to the kids. And there's a number of different instances, this isn't a life sentence. So we have plenty of kids that will transition into Eagle Academy, spend six months, a year, two years, and then they transition back to our schools. So while we're holding on to them, while they're staying here, we can do things like flexible schedules, half of the day at Eagle Academy, half of the day at JFK, right? They can come in a little later here, but then they're going to stay longer there. I mean, we have so much more opportunity for them, that's the benefit of this. Example B would allow us to expand that. So savings from, I just used the number five, maybe it's ten, maybe it's eight, maybe it's three, but for, if we had five Enfield kids that are currently outplaced, average cost on every one of those kids, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Five of them come back, you don't have to pay the hundred and fifty thousand anymore, you just saved yourself seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, and they have a better education, they're in their local community, and it's, it's the benefit for them. So now we have thirty-three, thirty-three seats, we used five of them for our Enfield kids, you have twenty-eight more kids, those twenty-eight kids, you're going to charge seventy-seven thousand dollars for, per year, you get two point one five six million from them, add those two numbers together, example B is more likely what it's going to produce for revenue for you, two point nine million dollars. I will emphasize that that is a gross number, that's total revenue. For us to be able to sustain and properly run an Eagle Academy with sixty kids, obviously we're going to need more staff. Initial projections from, you know, what I come up with, when I work with Julie Carroll, our Director of Pupil Services, and Andy and all the other folks that have looked into this, it's probably going to be a little less than a million dollars, is what it would take in terms of additional staff. So now, instead of a two point nine million revenue, you're at a one point nine million, still a revenue. So the final piece for the public schools is the estimated cost of conversion there is six point six million dollars. Again, you're going to get probably eighty-two percent of that back from the six point six million. Unfortunately, the one number I didn't give you is what eighty-two percent of six point six million is, but I wanted to give you some homework, so there you go. It's paying itself back in a year, under a year. Now, you're not going to go, please understand, you're not going to go from twenty-seven kids to sixty kids like that, right? It's going to be a gradual process to build, where you can bring some more staff in, where you expand the program, so it's going to take some time to get you there, so it might be sort of a, a one or a two-year type of return, but you're going to be able to get there. And I think the, the thing to remember here is the seventy-seven thousand is going to increase every year. We're currently seventy-three, I called it seventy-seven to give it a little bit of inflation. We're going to, we're going to charge what would be the fair market value for a public outplacement. So we're going to look at what is everybody else charging and what's the sweet spot for us? Because if you go too high, they're going to go someplace else. If you go too low, we're cheating ourselves. So we have to go off of a fair market analysis in terms of what would a public outplacement. Now, public outplacements right now, shockingly, right around seventy-seven thousand dollars. Private outplacements, easily in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, easily. So this is a bargain for those sending districts. So I don't think that.
That was good with Eagle Academy.
Okay. Next slide. Other savings, because that's just projected revenue and projected savings. If we had the ability to have three either new, renovated as new and expanded buildings, clearly you're going to have energy savings that are going to be associated with those. Electrical and heating, I did a little bit of research in terms of what the electrical costs were from like July to December of two thousand twenty-two, was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, heating was about a hundred and thirty-six thousand, so that's going to, I mean, it's, it's cold outside right now, so your heating bills are just going, they're escalating and escalating right now. HVAC assessment, if you were to put in for a school construction grant, and it was approved, we're required to do HVAC assessments every certain number of years, we completed one last year, the year before. If you go into a, a school construction grant type of process, they put a pause on that for you for three years. So because of the timeframe that we did that in, and because of the three-year pause, we likely would not have to do any type of additional HVAC assessments till probably two thousand thirty-one. If we, if we don't do anything, you're going to be required to do at least twenty percent of your buildings every year. So I know if we did it last year or the year before, and another three or four years, you're going to have to do all five again, or you're going to have to start doing at least twenty percent of your buildings every year. Other savings, there's a potential sale of any of the sites that we do not utilize. Obviously, I want to say Nathan Hale was recently sold, so a similar type of situation, where you have, may have a building that you could potentially sell. And then the realized additional savings, any of the savings that we have that are included here, those could clearly be utilized and their offsets for the staffing that we need to expand to get that Eagle Academy to the sixty possible students. From a Board of Education side, transportation is a big change. We are no longer transporting kids all around the district, you know, we're now sort of a home-based type of school, so all, all of our specialty programs, instead of only having one in one location, we can put them in each of our buildings, so those, again, for those kids, for those families, they're in their typical peer setting of where they would be. Staffing-wise, if we go from six down to three, there are redundancies in place that we could potentially reduce down, obviously administration, shared staff that we have that are running between buildings, and food service staff. Food service is a whole nother animal. Right now, you have a whole bunch of transportation happening for food service, because we only have two kitchens, and then they shuttle everything around. If you do a project like this, you have the ability to potentially put a kitchen in each one of your buildings, which is obviously a complete change to the food service program. I, I quickly went over the other savings for the town, but the custodial, the grounds of maintenance and things of that nature, I'll be honest with you, I skipped right over it, because in my opinion, I don't know if it's necessarily something you would want to reduce. I think we have JFK's brand, uh, brand-new building, high school's a brand-new building, we already have some concerns over sort of the maintenance of them on a daily basis, the number of custodians that are being able to upkeep them. Again, just my opinion, I'm not in charge of that, but I would say you would maybe want to maintain those, because you can spend a lot of money on big, beautiful buildings, but if we don't continually maintain them, we're going to end up at that other slide where we're at sixty million dollars again. Last slide for me is, again, this is potential, this is next steps. I just sort of put this together after a conversation with a number of different town officials that we met with and we presented this to. Rather than putting it as a list, I sort of created a little timeline for you. So potentially, it would be my respectful request, and I know it would be Charlotte's, that the council sort of mul this over and possibly establish a pre-refereendum committee, because that is the next step. You know, if, I, I provided a link to the overview of the state school construction process, because that will take you step by step through what you need to do. It has to come from the town, from the, sort of the, the folks who control the money and control the decisions related to that in terms of next step. So next step truly is the council vote to establish a pre-refereendum. Should that happen, then the council would vote to authorize funds, and sort of this is where the, the professionals come in, right? So these are the folks that are going to look at the seven sites, determine which three are the best, which is the best way to go, and then they're going to come up with the architectural and the environmental study that goes along with it, that justifies that. Design architect in spring/summer twenty-five determines the site's costs and options for the pre, for the pre-ref committee. Should we decide to move forward, should you decide to move forward with that, you then need to go out and public input, communication, we need to share all this information, obviously sessions and things of that nature, to explain it all in terms of true transparency, as Mike said before, you know, we need to tell them, what are we spending, how are we spending it, what is the benefit to them? Obviously, I'll come at it from the educational side, we can work together in terms of making sure that every, everybody truly understands that. February twenty-six figure that you could potentially have a town referendum, and really, I put December two thousand twenty-six because it has to go through the legislature, and they have to approve the fact that that school construction grant is under approval. And at that point, when you get that approval, you're able to go out and you'll start your, your full-blown process. But I, I'm sort of preaching to the choir, you guys have done this. You know how it works with Enfield, or Enfield High, you know how it worked with JFK, all those other ones that you went through. I believe there's a gentleman who's a local expert who came today, which I was introduced to, so he could have done this presentation for me, that would have been great. So, and again, the, the big piece for us is just something needs to happen, something needs to move forward, and I'm going to give you a four instance. I had a phone call today where I found out that one of our elementary classrooms had to be shifted to the library, because it doesn't have heat, because the valve, which was leaking, which didn't get fixed, then let go, and that we now, I can hear you now, Bob, no. Which caused the classroom to then have to shift to the library. The parts are so old, the part will not be here for at least a week. So I have an elementary classroom in a library. That's one instance, that's one classroom. Second classroom, same building, they were able to fix the valve, put a Band-Aid on it, so that that classroom didn't have to move. My worry is, one classroom, two classroom, wing of classrooms, like we, this is something that has to be on the radar and we have to get moving with. But again, the options are option A, fix what we have, option B, let the design professionals and all those folks come up with what is the best-case scenario for you as a town. I'm just here to sort of present your different options. Happy to answer any questions that I possibly can, or I'll defer to Andy, because he hasn't said anything tonight.
Questions?
Councilman Crisanti.
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. One of the questions that, that's come up, and I know that this is something that's on the horizon, and I don't know, you, you did not address it, is the universal pre-K. You know, I think that, you know, if we're, we're looking at renovate to new, I think that has to be part of the, the process with this presentation that you're doing. So did you give that any consideration at this point in time, knowing that? So did you give that any consideration at this point in time, knowing that universal pre-K is right around the corner?
Yeah, it's been a lot of, we've, we actually have had a lot of conversation about universal pre-K, and I think that's one of the parameters you can potentially put into the study, is a pre-K through five versus a K-5. But you could also look at taking one of the, the buildings which are vacant, which would be vacated, which were designed for elementary, elementary-age students, potentially putting it into that building. Because we do have sites that are larger than Stowe currently, because we need more rooms, right? And this is a, I will tell you that this is an issue current day. So I have meetings set up to talk about integrated pre-K, so our special, our special education program. Because our numbers are so great and continue to increase that we're almost in exceedance of the number of kids we can have in that program. So I need another space. So that is something that's absolutely been a conversation point. And again, I, I would prefer to leave it to the folks who are doing the study to say, this is what we need. And in my mind, this whole, we changed it to be reimagining. She did a great job choosing that name. So we changed it to reimagining because we truly have to think not about just tomorrow. We need to think about three years down the road because universal pre-K is coming. And if we're not ready for it in three to five years, you're looking at kids in like portables and things of that nature, which is okay, but that's not, it's not appropriate. It, it's not best practice for that.
Okay, thank you. Because I think that should be part of the feasibility study, and I do like the idea of a vacated building to be able to use that as an integration for this particular program. So I know that from the other, other study that, that we had done, I noticed that, you know, some of the information I think you, you got from the previous study, obviously through Russell and Dawson, you know, because there, there was the, that procedure that we had parents, we had teachers, we had community input, we had Board of Ed, we had Town Council, DPWs, everybody was involved in this process. So I'm glad that you used a lot of that information and put it into your presentation. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm all set.
So there's no, there's no doubt that we have to do something. And it's, I've never been a fan of putting the sister schools. I remember advocating way back when to younger parents saying, don't let them do this, but my kids were already in college, so, you know. So I do agree that they should be K to five. It's also not a secret that I'm a big proponent of neighborhood schools. I mean, I've been really vocal about it, but the experts say that's not the direction we should go in, and so I respect that. When it says avoid redistricting, though, they make redistricting sound like it's a dirty word. It's happened before. Families move, areas shift, the town changes. So there could definitely be some value in looking at redistricting even now to see if we can get some of our classrooms a little smaller. So I'm just putting that out there, it's my own opinion, and that's it. And depending on where you're going to place these three schools, you are going to be looking at maybe moving kids around a little bit. So, but I am in favor of doing something, we have to. There, there's just, you know, so, and again, I will definitely value the opinion of the experts, so thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Councilman Angier.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your presentation, it's nice to see you all again. I just had one question. Of the students that are outplaced, do you happen to know the farthest distance that they're sent or how long they're on this bus or how many miles it is for them?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that off the top of my head, and I'm going to claim new guy status because of that, but I can absolutely get that for you. You know, Julie Carroll, Director of People's Services, would know it immediately.
All set, Lori? Councilman Ludwig.
Again, thank you. This has actually been one of the better presentations from, you know, the board in a while, so I appreciate it. And again, I, I'm going to save, the Eagle Academy presentation was, is long overdue so people understand really what the thought process was and where we're at and, and why we have an opportunity, because we have a specialty in it, by the way. We have, actually have specialty in this town where we can, again, and, and the other thing too, here, you know, I, I said this, so part of that process, when we had some pretty smart people in a room putting this together, which Andy was there, and when we moved Head Start to Stowe, remember, there's a, there was sort of a precursor to get there. And, and the thing when, when moving Head Start to Stowe, every single child in this town has the same access to education. There, there's politicians all over the country that run for higher office claiming they're going to do that. We already did it here, and that should be part of, this is a fantastic presentation that you should be putting in every, every one of your budgets because there's so many nuances to what the Eagle Academy was. Wasn't, I mean, yes, the savings is in front of you, and there, and it's, it's, and it can be a self-serving, meaning sustaining program if we do it right. And so that's a key, though. I mean, that's a key piece that I would, just remember that when you're doing this presentation, because that was one of the reasons why we did all this. And I know you've heard some of the stories of kids that we were able to bring back who could participate in football and other sports where they couldn't because they were stuck on a bus all day. I mean, so this is some really good stories here that people don't know about. And having said that, again, I'm going to say this publicly because I, I, I will not support $190 million referendum. I said it back when we had this thing back in whatever it was, but to renovate to new with the Eagle Academy, I would actually support this because it's exactly, we're, we're, we're thinking not just, new doesn't mean better, in my opinion, all the time. And we're actually trying to maintain some of our buildings that are very unique, by the way. And, you know, gives us some flexibility, to your point, you know, when it comes to the whole mandatory pre-K, I have my own theory on that, I'm not going to get into it, and so I'll save that for another day. But again, I think as long as we can afford, and I know we haven't talked about in the town side, you know, 50-ish million dollars in our bonding, which is the key, that's the key, because we did this before JFK, before we put the pre-ref together, we told the public what we could afford, and then everyone got on board. And I know that'll be a separate discussion for us, but I appreciate the three options you're basing, I know you kind of rolled them into two. I, I actually would support the renovate to new, still a little high for my blood when it comes to the money, however, I understand exactly, and the reimbursement, I agree. The regionalization piece, we can get more if you actually do the, I agree, I appreciate you mentioning that. So the reimbursement may be actually more than what you're presenting here, which then gives you maybe that contingency you were talking about, which gives us some of that flexibility. And so I would be, if the council decides to do a pre-ref because that is the next step, or this should be the first step, and it's something we'd have to do in January to get it started, and then you go to bid, you do all the things, so we make sure we follow the rules, and we're not one of those towns that, you know, were investigated for some of those other things that were down south. And so I think there is some specific rules that we followed specifically in Enfield High and JFK, and, but I'll say this publicly because I, again, I know you've been putting some work, you've taken some of the, some of the stuff we said, at least, I know I've mentioned to somebody what I would be willing to support when it comes to cost. So I appreciate you coming back with a revised number. If our finance director says we can afford 50-something million dollars, let's get it going in January. Thank you.
I like to hear that, Mike. Finally, get something going. Councilman Santinella. No, you were next.
Okay. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about this right, and maybe this is a question through the marriage of the town manager or the finance director. So unlike most bonding initiatives, like when we built Enfield High School, like nothing, nothing changed. There was no revenue associated with that project, right? It was, we're just built, we're building a new school and the burden of that transformation was going to go to the taxpayers. This proposal, there's a revenue component to it and a savings component to it, right? So I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about this the right way. If you take option B, right, and you have savings of $750,000 a year, and you have the additional revenue from the students at Eagle Academy, our bonding would be 30-year bonds, right? It's a 30-year time period. Is that correct? Is it? No? What is the bond period?
20.
20.
20.
Okay. So, so, so my math is going to be a bit, a little bit wrong, but over that 20-year period of time, if it were a 30-year bond, right, we would have savings and additional revenue in the amount of $87 million, right? So there's a net positive to the town. And that cost is more than the $78 million or the 52 million. So, so the net impact in this proposal potentially has no long-term impact to the taxpayer because, or it's minimized by, am I not thinking about that properly?
I'm going to leave the finance part to Mr. Wilcox.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'm going to say, I like the way you summarize that for us.
No, but, but I'm not, no, because I, but no, because it's not, so I just want to make sure that I'm not, I'm not fabricating some reality here. There is a revenue stream and associated with this that we don't get with other bonding projects. It's all money out. There is money in. So that has to be calculated into an understanding of what the impact is from a taxpayer standpoint.
Agreed.
And so...
Because it's money in plus you're offsetting budget increases.
Correct. So I just want to know if that is, I just want to know if that is a fair way of looking at this.
I would say it is. So the state has a couple of different initiatives right now where they're providing additional reimbursement rates for high-need areas. Early education is one of them, and these therapeutic type of programs is another one because it's one of the State Department of Education's priorities, they just released their priorities. It's one of the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendents priorities in terms of increasing the amount of these programs because we cannot continue to face the increasing charges that are placed upon us from the private institutions. So they're trying to incentivize towns such as Enfield who are doing it right to go out and do these types of programs. I get, I, I was telling Chris the other day, I get as excited about this type of program because I think, like, we see the governor come out, guys did a great job at the press conference down by the river. The governor should be coming out to see the fact that Enfield is doing it right. We have 4,700 kids in our district. 25 outplacements out of 4,700. That's because you guys, as a town, the Board of Education, all the people services staff, the special education staff, they're doing what they need to do, what's right for kids, and that's keeping them here. And by the way, selfishly, they get a better education here. If you've been to a private outplacement, they'll get therapy, they're not getting academics. We're giving them both, and we're doing it right. So if we do this and we do it right, Chris is going to set, we're going to have the governor back out, we're going to have a big, because you guys have done it correct.
So...
I said governor's right, I didn't say president.
So can I just, can I just, can I just...
Did I say president?
They want the president.
Can, yeah, I'm sorry. If I, if I could just, I really, I really would like to understand, because as people know here, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about our overall debt and the impact that that has, right? And you've heard me say that a few times. I'm intrigued by this because of this revenue component. So I really would like to understand how this is going to play out in our debt service and our debt schedule, given the offset that I'm understanding.
And I think, I've been unusually quiet, but I think at this juncture, I could address that, Mr. Santinella. I think the, the structures that are around the debt and what we can afford, Mr. Wilcox is comfortable for the outright bonding. What you're talking about, will they recognize the fact that there's an income stream to us? And we'll, we'll look at that. I will let you know, we'll ask the expert, Attorney Matt Ritter, who is our bond counsel. I was hopeful we'd be moving this forward and appointing the pre-ref committee next meeting. He's a very busy individual. He is already on our schedule for the next meeting in January, and I will convey that question to him, John is listening, and we'll get the answer back. I think certainly in positing the argument to the public, it's crucial to know that. Whether or not the banks and the bond people recognize it, that we'll get back to you on, and Mr. Ritter can address it too. But I know what you're talking about.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll be brief, I appreciate the presentation. So I think, and I'm hoping what the 11 of us agree on is, one, that something has to be done, and two, that it really should return to K through five or pre-K through five. I think that's the consensus up here. I think that's kind of where that consensus ends, which is fine. I'm hoping, though, that is kind of where our, I'm going to say level of expertise, but I'm using expertise very loosely, should really end. And the people who are the experts and the parents, the teachers, the staff, the admin, the experts who are coming in to do this study, I think that's who should come up with ultimately the plan. And I think that we should kind of just sit back and listen, even though we pay the bill ultimately, we shouldn't be the ones that will press upon you what our individual feelings are about this. That being said, honestly, I'm a little frustrated that we're here again and we had all of this work done prior, but again, those two things we agree on, that something has to be done and it should be K to five, so let's just, I'll agree with Mike, let's just get it done.
Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate your time. We did have a study done previously. I hate to see us go back and reinvent the wheel. We obviously do need to make some changes, corrections, and address the issue urgently. What I'd like more clarification, when you talk about other savings, obviously, you know, you've got the town of Enfield column, and then you've got the Board of Education. What I'd like to understand a little better, how will there be savings in the transportation area and staffing? We just lost a tremendous amount of staff people, including para's, teachers. And transportation, we are required by federal law to provide for all students. So where is there going to be a savings in either of those areas?
So from the, the transportation is included there because of all of the transportation runs that happen before and after school across the districts. So you can consolidate some of those. If, if we have before and after-school care that's housed out of the main buildings, you're not transporting kids to other locations and paying the extra fees that are associated with that. So that's where one of the transportation pieces comes in. We're actually in the process of looking at all of our transportation runs and trying to consolidate down the number of bus runs that we currently have. The sister school model, obviously you have kids dropped off at one location, then you have to go bring them to another location. If you have the, that same bus that only has to drop off at one location, you have potential transportation savings there as well. In terms of the staffing, obviously I listed administration, and you know, that if you have six buildings, you have six principals, you have six assistant principals. If you have three buildings, you aren't going to have six principals, you're going to have three principals. Depending on the number of kids in those buildings, you may need more than one assistant principal, but there's potential administrative savings there. In terms of the other staff, when you have staff that have to be provided across multiple buildings, every time a staff member has to go from one building to another, there's a chunk of their day you cannot schedule them. They have to have their prep, they have to have their transit time, they have to have all, whereas if they are all in one building, they just go through the day. And, and a lot of those are support service types of people, like our occupational therapists, they don't need to split between buildings, you can just have them housed in the one. So there's minimal in terms of those support services staff, but a lot of it would be coming from the administration and then the transportation piece. Food service is listed there. If you have three buildings versus six buildings, you obviously don't need as much staff in terms of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So phenomenal job. Steve, Charlotte, Andy, phenomenal job. I know I upset some people when I moved this to DPW a couple months ago, but if that's what it took to get us where we are today, I'm glad I did it. At this point, I think the question, the only question that should involve this town council is how much? How much are we willing to spend to go to the next step? And I'm looking through, and we...
And I'm looking through, and we've discussed it, we've had meetings, we've talked numbers, and I think I can confidently say, the renovate to new, the $170 million, up to $170 million, we have consensus to move to pre-ref committee. So at that point, I would ask that we put it on the next agenda to move it forward. So it's first meeting in January, we give you guys to go, and let's make this happen finally. We've been talking about it for three years. Gina is correct. But as far as redistricting and, you know, K through five, that's not our decision. And I don't want to get involved with it. It's 100% on you guys and the experts. So.
I second that to put it on the January meeting.
So, thank you again, and we finally made the next step. Let's wrap it up, and I look forward to having it on a referendum in, you know, February of 2026. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Anger, I'll get you that information now. I'll email you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I will just say, I'm not willing to, the money they can make on Eagle Academy, I'm not willing to invest that in three new schools. Let's, let them create a revenue stream to help them with future budgets instead of spending it before we make it. Okay, now that we're done with that, so we will move on to public communications. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to, remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 PM, each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour or less unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. So who would like to come up? Robert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Excellent presentation by the superintendent. I hope I get some time. I'd like to say a few words about that, too. Also, before I get started, good job by Attorney Serrato the other day in court, and we don't have our verdict yet, but we're hoping for the best. So, fingers crossed. So tonight, I would like to discuss some economic development, apartments and education issues, and their relationship to one another. I should start by saying that I'm not a big, big proponent of any new apartment projects, except of course, senior apartments, which do not carry the burden of education expenses year after year. I'd like to request from the town manager or economic development director, a PowerPoint presentation presented at a town meeting regarding the complete economic development analysis for the three proposed apartment developments. The mall project with 450 units, the project by the river with 320 units, and Union Square with 70 units. Over 800 units in total. Do we really need 800 new apartment units? A thousand if you include the already approved South Road project. The economic development analysis should of course include the increased grand list value, the increased tax revenue, and offset by the temporary tax abatement. But it shouldn't stop there. Yearly education expenses should be included in this calculation. You cannot determine the net revenues until you have also factored in all the expenses. An accurate estimate of children living in these new apartments must be done with the knowledge that the state is trying to aggressively promote low-income housing, which of course will include greater numbers of school-aged children. And projected forecasts must take this into consideration. After factoring in education expenses for the children that will be living in these 1,000 new units, I think we'll find that we're going to have a far less, I think we're, I think we'll find that we're going to be far less excited about these projects. All we hear about is, is grand list increases and tax revenues, but nobody ever talks about the phenomenal education expenses. I guess I can squeeze this in now. I was in the meeting with those 78 unexpected sped kids earlier this summer, and, and I love the presentation, I'm all for the Eagle Academy. Do you know what's gonna happen if we immediately have 30 extra seats in our Eagle Academy and 1,000 new apartment buildings? You know what's gonna happen. So we have to consider that, too. People are gonna be flocking in from out of district, out of state, and it's gonna be a problem. So I'm all for Eagle Academy, I'm, I'm not for apartments. We have enough. Okay, so, we also have to consider the problem of unruly behavior that we already have too far, far too much of in our schools. A thousand new apartment units will certainly not be helpful. Now, now to the good stuff. It's not all negative. I am not against development, I'm in favor of the mall redevelopment and T-Ville redevelopment, as well as the train station. Enfield historically has done an excellent job with economic development. The industrial park, all the new businesses on Moody Road, Peerless Way, the soccer complex, the warehouses even, even though there's a bit of a trucking issue, all the medical office buildings on Elm Street and Hazard Avenue. We have Kohl's Plaza, Barnes &amp; Noble, Home Depot, ShopRite, Big Y, all those plazas with almost full occupancy. Enfield knows how to do good economic development. But we have to be more selective. Apartments are not the answer. Apartments are an economic liability, not an economic asset. Let's stick to what we already know how to do, let's stick to what we can do well, let's not be influenced by enthusiastic marketing presentations by out-of-town developers, let's focus on what works best for Enfield, and let's also not be influenced by state-level and national politicians who want to take over local zoning, destroy single-family cars.
Time, Bob.
And I got two more sentences. Increase population density and ruin the quality of life and character of the suburbs. So, Eagle Academy is great, economic development's great, and no for apartments. Thank you, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Bob. George.
George Young, A Holly Lane. I'll be very brief. I'll not be discussing any numbers tonight from the financials.
You should end it right there.
I took your place. The printed financials for the year 2023 have been completed and were available about 12 days ago. It should be noted that the audit opinion stated that the financials present fairly each major fund, et cetera, for the year ended June 30, 2023. There was no submission noted this year by the Finance Department for a certificate of achievement for excellence in the financial report to the town for the first time in about 29 years, which has been given by the Government Finance Officers Association in the past. Although I don't know for sure, but one reason may have been because the report due within six months of the completion of the fiscal year ended June 30, 23, plus extensions, was not finished until November 11, 2024. This year, there was a lot of blame on the non-completion of tasks due to the departure of long, of long-term employees. It is my opinion that the long-term employees left between September and November '23, which is three to five months after the year ended. During the fiscal year ended June 30, 23, many of the tasks noted in the state and federal audit reports that were not completed were accounts in the general ledger that were routine and should have been done on a monthly basis. I would encourage the council to read these reports before you get concerned about the numbers. For example, see page 14 of the federal single audit report, and you would realize what I'm trying to say. The fiscal year '22 and '21 have both been adjusted because they would not be correct without adjusting entries. That part bothers me, the part that bothers me is the audit, because they would, team stated that we are currently training to assist with the analysis and reconciliation of general ledger accounts. I'm sure the time spent by them was momentarily, monetarily costly to the town. I have previously suggested, previously, that if possible, the town should hire a qualified degreed accountant to assist the Finance Department. The audit stated that there were material weaknesses in internal controls over tax collections and water pollution control revenues, not reconciled monthly between the tax collectors and the Finance Department, which are a repeat of the prior year findings. The report indicated that management agreed with the audit findings and planned corrective action. I could go on, but suffice it to say that I believe the delay was caused internally, and with the training that has been stated, I'm hoping we do not see a significant delay in the fiscal year 2024 report. Have a great holiday, and I hope to see you all next year. Thanks.
Thank you for your time. I also want to thank you all for your service here, I appreciate it. I just wanted to, I'm gonna keep this quick in general, I do have some concerns about the light ordinance changes. I feel that the ones that we have currently are intrusive, and I think that they are subjective. I've had personal bad experience dealing with this, and I'm not gonna get into that and make this a big complaint, but I just want to encourage this council to, and, and the committee that's preparing that, to recognize that the ones we have are intrusive and subjective, and that if they are going to make changes, they should make them so that they're less intrusive and subjective. I think that, I think that's, I believe in keeping my yard clean, I believe that everybody should, I believe people who have property have a responsibility to keep their property nice for themselves and for their neighbors, but I do not believe that it is the government's responsibility to force people to do that. It is their property, and it is their right to maintain it in a way that they wish. And yes, I think that there are exceptions when we have to think about large environmental problems or people doing things that are, that will endanger other people and do harm, but I do not want somebody to tell me that something is persistent garbage refuse or trash when it's been on my lawn for two weeks. And I also do not want to be dismissed when I call the town and have a complaint about them doing that to me. So, I guess I did get a little detail, sorry. But as I said, I want to encourage the committee and the town council to make sure that if they are making changes, that they are taking that into consideration, that we are in a free country, and a person's property is their property, and they have a right to have it the way they, they want it, and that it is not the responsibility of the government to tell them how tall their, how long their grass should be, or what they should have, how many cars they should have parked in their front yard. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas or whatever holiday they, they celebrate.
Okay, Pam.
Pam Townsend, 54 Kimberly Drive, and I'm here to talk about Wreaths Across America. As you all know, I'm a location coordinator, and I'm here tonight to thank every sponsor and volunteer, and especially those that stepped up at the last minute to read the names of Enfield's heroes. I don't know why I'm always amazed, because Enfield really has some awesome people living here, despite what some people may say. I get to see the real positive side of everybody. And you've made Enfield Ceremony very successful, and I thank you for that. So what I'd like to do is explain a little bit about how our Wreaths Across America here in Enfield works. Every location does handle their ceremonies a little bit differently. Here in Enfield, we do have two location coordinators. I'm one for St. Pat's Cemetery, and Kelly Davis is the other one. She, she works, she supports the Daughters of the American Revolution for King Street Cemetery. However, we both work together in making Wreaths Across America successful. And the primary ceremony location is at St. Pat's. Together, there were 2,539 wreaths placed. Of those, there were over 950 wreaths received during last year's wreath match event. And basically, that equates to St. Patrick's Cemetery being 100% covered, Enfield Street Cemetery 100% covered, Old Hazardville Cemetery 100% covered, King Street Cemetery 100% covered, Holy Cross Cemetery 100% covered, St. Adelbert's, we put out about 36, New Hazardville, I'm not really sure, DAR did that one. Old St. Pat's had about 20, Old Thompsonville about 20, St. Bernard's, we're very limited what we can do there, so we put one at the entranceway. Every one of the cemeteries did have a wreath placed in honor of our Enfield veterans. Enfield has 11 cemeteries, one is a Muslim cemetery, so we cannot go into that one. This equates to five out of our 10 cemeteries that we can do, so we were at 50% of covering our cemeteries. So my point here tonight is sharing all of this, because right now, through January 17, 2025, there is a sponsor one, get one promotion for the wreath. And if you plan to sponsor a wreath, this is really the best time to do it. And please go to www.wreathsacrossamerica.org backslash CTSPC, and then scroll down for an extra bonus and select a fundraising group. In addition to a free second wreath, the group receives $5 back, and this is a great opportunity to increase the number of veterans honored in 2025. Plus, you support a local nonprofit. If you have any questions or you prefer to write a check, you may contact me at email And one more note, I've been doing this seven years this year, and we always have to turn in our boxes to the recycle, I'm always trying to organize somebody to come and pick it up at the, in the morning after we stage all the wreaths. Well, this year, all the boxes were picked up by Enfield's Police Explorers to use for their toy drive. So I was real excited with that. It was a great, it's a great way to reuse the boxes, and I hope that we can continue doing that. I hope the boxes will all work out for them. Sometimes they get a little wet, so they can't use them, but I was real excited when I got the phone call, can I come and get your boxes? So, I just thought it was really cool. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, everybody. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Pam. Lori.
Good evening. Lori Longy, 1427 Enfield Street. I strongly believe that the proposed purchase of St. Adalbert's Gym for $1,400,000 warrants further explanation and examination. As a responsible steward of the taxpayer funds, I think it's essential to obtain an independent appraisal to ensure the purchase price is fair and reasonable. A review of sales in the Thompsonville area reveals significant discrepancies in the price per square foot. For instance, 25 High Street sold for $55 a square foot. That was a 5,000-square-foot building. 11 Pearl Street, a 7,000-square-foot building, the old fire station, sold for $26 a square foot. 27 Pearl Street, a 15,000-square-foot building, the old Diana's Bakery, sold for $21 a square foot. 110 High Street, a 6,000-square-foot building that the town owned, turned to a daycare, $72 a square foot. 9 North Main Street, a 9,000-square-foot building next to the old Angelo La Mania Center, $46 a square foot. 12 Alden Avenue, a 16,000-square-foot building, the old banquet facility, $50 a square foot. 723 Enfield Street, a church, a hall, and a house, 5,700 square feet, $61 a square foot. And this was on 10 acres of land. 10 acres of land. While the gym is priced at $148 per square foot on a tiny lot, and if they're going to do a build-out, a commercial appraiser would do this type of an appraisal all the time. And so this raises concerns about the justification of the asking price. There are two other buildings for sale in this immediate area, both that are listed under $850,000. Brusello's Garage and the Connecticut Custom Car Building. Both have high ceilings and walking distance to this gym or to the town hall. Has anyone looked into either of those for alternatives or even negotiation purposes? Considering the town's pressing needs, I propose exploring alternative uses for the available ARPA funds. Our sewers require urgent repairs. The Alcoran Gym Floor needs renovation. The junior high school sports could be funded. Our EMS, that's where we could really put some money. The police department, Public Works, and the library could benefit from additional resources. Remember those books from the library last year? They only needed $10,000 for books. I think more people in this town use the public library than play basketball and imagine what they could do if you gave them $50,000. You can spend this ARPA money on anything that you want that would reduce our upcoming budget. I really don't care what you pick, but it should reduce our upcoming budget, not increase it. To purchase something that will cost us additional money to maintain, clean, and staff, that is just what doesn't feel right to me. It's crucial to prioritize fiscal responsibility and ensure that the taxpayer funds are utilized properly. I urge you, when it comes up for a vote, that you reconsider the purchase and seek a more cost-effective solution that better serves our community needs as a whole. Think about it this way. If you go into Dunkin' Donuts each day and you buy a $3 cup of coffee, and today you go in there and that same cup of coffee is $25, do you still want that cup of coffee? Do you check and see if the coffee is left someplace else? Do you purchase lunch instead with the $25 and get more for your money? I think you can get more for your money that better serves our community as a whole by just looking through the items that were cut in the last year's budget and use the ARPA money there. You could use it for the urgent list that the BOE just presented. These items were on there. There's $1,500,000 for these schools, but we're going out and we're purchasing something that we're going to have to maintain and actually spend more money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori. Nikki.
Good evening, Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. After learning this council is considering the purchase of St. Adalbert's Gym with the ARPA grant money, I rewatched the budget meetings on ETV that is funding the current town budget. These meetings were tense and unpleasant due to the fact the council at that time was facing an unexpected bailout to the Board of Education in an amount of $5.6 million. To make the Board of Education whole and over time to replenish the town's reserve fund, tough budget cuts were made to ensure the mill rate did not increase for the Enfield taxpayers. While the rationale seems plausible in providing a recreation center that will be used by a limited population of our residents, shouldn't the grant money be applied to a project or projects that benefit the town as a whole, especially after the draconian cuts to each town department? Wouldn't it be more prudent for this government body to be proactive by applying the ARPA money to capital improvement projects or auto replacement expenditures that were put on hold? Let's also mention our aging infrastructure, such as our sewers, lines, and pump stations that are in need of overdue maintenance. In a short few weeks, this body will be engaged in funding discussions for next year's budget. Wouldn't it make sense to use the ARPA money to fund the cuts that were made to ease the burden on the town and its people for the foreseeable future? In closing, I hope this council will be forward-looking with this money for the benefit of the town as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, we'll end. Public -- nobody wants to come up. So we will move on to Councilman Communications. John.
I'm going to be just --
Councilman Santinella.
Yeah, I'm just going to be really quick. Thank you very much. First of all, Pam and Lucian, Wreaths Across America, as always. Okay, Pam, it's all Pam. Lucian didn't do anything. Thank you. Listen, it's always an honor to be there. It was a great day. Thank you so much for what you do. It's much appreciated. Also, I just wanted to just give a brief summary of an email that I received from a constituent, Amory Galdenzi, who lives on Enfield Street, mimicking some of the same concerns that Ms. Longy and Ms. Price have about the expense of the ARPA funds, and also believes that these funds could be better used in -- for infrastructure and other projects. And I told her, since she couldn't attend, that I would just pass that on without reading all of her comments in detail. I believe she copied you on the email as well. Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina, anything?
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. See you next year.
Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to, you know, before our council meeting, Deputy Chief Stephen Kozlowski graduated from the FBI National Academy, and once again, congratulations to him. To Lucian and Pam, actually, we got to give a shout-out to Lori Gates, too, for their work for Wreaths Across America. Special thank you to the both of you for the outstanding program that, you know, has the theme of remember, honor, and teach. All right? And I think that's very important, and job well done. Every year just seems to get a little stronger and stronger, so thank you for that. Also, attended the pancake breakfast at Enfield High School. Thanks to Chef O and the students for the outstanding breakfast. Once again, many families and children came out to see Santa and Buddy Elf have their pictures taken with them. It was a great, great morning, and then just led right into the Wreaths Across America. So it was a good day. Couple of weeks ago, and I -- we did not recognize it, but I'm going to recognize it There's a group out there that saved our sports. And once again, Peter King, famous award-winning writer, Enfield High grad, writer for Sports Illustrated, won numerous awards. With his help, this group raised over $150,000 for Enfield sports, and, you know, they are to be commended. Russ Tyler, Tom's brother, Bob Bremerich, and Paul De Silva. You know, once again, you know, it'd be nice that, you know, we're making this reference to them now, and I talked to the town manager, you know, can we do something for Peter King and everything that he's done here for town? But it's something that we can, you know, talk about. But once again, the outreach of helping 200 student athletes being able to get back on the field for next fall, I think, is something that should be commended. There's also another group out there, and there's a continuing theme here that we're seeing, you know, funding our future. There's a group out there that's doing a community project, and their goal is to raise $6,500 to help schools do field trips and have special speakers come in throughout the year. So, you know, that theme of, you know, we are getting private people coming in and donating funds to help our town, you know? And I'm still a proponent that, you know, it's the council's fiscal responsibility to be funding our projects and these programs, and we are not. You know, we're asking a lot for these groups to come up, through the mayor to the town manager. Can we get an exact estimate what it would be to fully enclose Powder Hollow and then for the two dugout areas? Because I'm in contact right now, there's a group of people that would -- that are interested in funding to finish off that project. Okay? So if we can get an exact answer, then I can go back to this group of individuals to possibly get an answer, final answer from them regarding that. But there's that theme, okay? You know, it's our responsibility. We have a project. Finish the project. Do it correct. We have responsibilities that, you know, we have to start taking hold of. You know, yeah, we're worried about, you know, our funds and everything. We're looking at, you know, the Eagle Academy. I'm glad that, Mr. Bukowski, you like the Eagle Academy. That was nice to hear coming from your mouth. But, you know, one thing is, you know, but once again, we're looking at it as money-generating revenue. But we still have to look at the child as a whole, and we have to look at proper staffing to make sure that we're going to do this and do it correctly. But so, you know, I could go on and just mention a few other things that are going on here in town, but I'm not going to do that. It's the holiday spirit, and I want to wish everybody on the council here, all the residents of the town of Enfield, all of our municipal employees, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Thanks for everything that you do. For all the volunteers that are out there, thank you for your -- all of your efforts, especially the people that work at the warming center now. And then we have people that are volunteer consistently at Loews and Fishes and at the food shelf. Thank you for all that you do, and once again, let's have a good 2025 year coming up here and remain positive with everything moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. I also would like to thank and congratulate Pam for the wonderful work with the Wreaths Across America. That really is a tremendous undertaking. And also to Kelly Davis from our DAR, and my sister daughters that, you know, worked side-by-side with Kelly to lay the wreaths. It was tremendous undertaking there, too. So to both groups, thank you very much. That was tremendous. I also would like to ask people to try and be kind, kinder this holiday season. There's so much violence. There's so much anger. There's so much disrespect in our world that we, like, you know, Pam stated earlier, that we have a wonderful Enfield community. Let's spread that. Let's spread that warmth and care and consideration, and let's extend it through the holiday season. So on that note, I do want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Jim.
Once again, I'll just say the same thing. Thank you, Pam, for all you do, and Lucian. I know somebody had to direct all that traffic, so thank you. And I'd like to wish everyone out there Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to publicly congratulate Deputy Chief Steve Kozlowski on graduating the FBI National Academy on December 12th. That is a huge accomplishment. It's not easy to get a seat in that academy, and not only to be there for 10 weeks during the rigorous training in Quantico, Virginia, and also passing all the courses and successfully graduating. Steve's going to bring back a lot of that training, the education back to the police department, which will be very beneficial for our town and our residents. So congratulations to Deputy Chief Steve Kozlowski. That is a huge accomplishment. And then also, Pam, thank you for all you did with the wreaths of America. Great ceremony, and I was glad, it was nice to see the hockey team was out there in full force, and they took upon a lot of the lion's share of helping out and assisting with the wreath. So that was good to see the Enfield High School hockey team as well. And Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Russo. Councilman Angier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate and thank Pam for all her hard work and the great success. And congratulations to Deputy Chief Kozlowski. He's one of Enfield's shining stars. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year, and just hope we all can have a joyful season. Also, through the mayor to the town manager, I had several residents contact me, I guess back in 2005, with Mary Lou Strom and Scott Copan, they had a ceremony where they dedicated a tree in front of the town hall close over to the Enfield Express Building, and it was dedicated to one of their family members, Roger Olson. And they said at the time, they put a little signature identifying it as dedicated to him, and it no longer exists. It was something that didn't last long. And now they said there's a rock there, and someone else's name is on it. So they've asked me to look into it, if you could see if that's the case, and if we could put something a little more permanent on there. I know he, Roger Olson, personally, and he did a lot of work for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Angier. Councilman Hendricksen.
Through the mayor to the town manager, I'd like to give a Christmas present to Mr. Young and possibly have our finance director do a financial presentation on the 2024 or 2023 budget, if that could be done. I would appreciate that.
I don't think that would be a present for Mr. Wilcox, however.
For Mr. -- yes, correct. I'm sorry about that. That's all. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Councilman Ludwig.
I'll be brief, too. Just to be clear, I'm through the mayor. We actually used to be able to bring the auditor here and do -- so I don't know if that's to fall on John. And we used to get it all the time. That might be a suggestion, I think would be great. So I -- suggestion. And then, quick reminder, the Scenic River Watershed Association has their annual meeting on Wednesday at the senior center, 6 o'clock. And then, I don't normally do this, but I think because we're at the end of the year, and there's two things that we -- we're going to make a motion to add to the agenda, if I could. First is, I know we have ARPA money that was allocated for the Thompson Bike Path, which, again, that project is sort of not moving forward or a little bit stale or stalled. We're make a -- to add the agenda to move $23,150 to the Grape Brook Pump Station.
Second? Second. Motion's being seconded. Everybody in favor of adding to the agenda? What do you mean, no? You want to throw away 25? You want to throw away $25,000? It's ARPA funds. If we don't move it, we lose it. Okay? It's unanimous to add to the agenda?
And then, this is just, we already have this on the agenda. This is the four-pack where we're reallocating money, and this is just to, again, the motion to actually allocate, to reallocate the money.
From the right account.
From the right account. So this will be, again, just to add the actual financial transfer, which is, again, already on the agenda, so this is just to move the 485, 543. So we need to add this to the agenda. Do I have a motion to please add this to the agenda?
Motion.
Second. Motion's being seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, I just want to thank again through the mayor, the town manager, the DEA presentation was fantastic. I've gotten a lot of feedback on it. So again, to the chief and to our team that is with the DEA. Great presentation, and again, I think it was well timed, by the way, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany, Mayor Pisner.
So I came in tonight and I had a surprise. Everyone knows I couldn't go on the truck because of the weather, but they did leave me with a beautiful little ornament. Thank you so much, Pam and Lucian, for delivering it to me, and I look forward to next year. I did also already buy my wreaths. I'll probably buy a few more before the 17th, but I use both my grandkids' schools to do them, so I kind of get a double, double hit. And again, thank you. And thank you to all the volunteers out there. Enfield truly is a great community. We come together, and I'm always amazed at what they do, always amazed. I know Two Moms on a Mission again this year have put together a phenomenal Christmas. So every family in town that's in need will be getting gifts, and nobody is left behind. And that is because we have such a great community of volunteers that come together. Thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. This is a busy time of the year. I appreciate you coming out and sharing your thoughts with all of us. And again, just a Merry Christmas to everybody out there, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and most importantly, a happy, healthy New Year to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pisner. Couple things. I will echo Councilman Russo with the deputy chief. That is an incredible accomplishment. I don't know if I have to salute him now or what I have to do, but, I mean, it is, it is incredible. So now that he has the FBI training, can we get him on the drone problem that we've been facing, you know? State-of-the-art training. He's as new as it gets. So next is the, we've been, I looked at the pickleball courts on South Road. I was always under the assumption that we rebuilt, rebuilt the entire plaza three, four years ago. Come to find out, we did not. The surface was painted, and we put new brackets and nets and stuff like that up, but the surface has come apart. Last year, the town sent a company in to fix the surface with a 20-year guarantee, and they did. And I saw pictures of it, and I went and looked at it myself, and it's 100% unacceptable. This is one of the busiest-used areas in the town of Enfield, and it is a lot of our seniors. So let's go through this. Hazardville Memorial, or I'm sorry, Hazardville tennis courts are gone. Parkman tennis courts are closed. Fermi tennis courts are unsafe to use. There's nothing left. This is the only one. And this is where the seniors, hundreds of them, play pickleball. So I'm asking you to allow us to move this to DPW. And I know a couple of years ago, there was a price for approximately $300,000 for a whole new base. We can reuse the equipment, and we don't need lights. So I'd like to just get a new price and bring it back to you guys, and possibly fix this problem once and for all before their spring season starts.
Ken?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, this was, this was always an issue with the, our leisure committee, and I think it should be brought to our, the leisure committee before it goes to your DPW committee. I don't have an issue in regard to taking a look at, at that, at that request, but that is part, the leisure committee's purview over that.
To repair it or replace it? I don't, the problem is, we, this, all towns, all government, they spend years talking about things. We put lipstick on a pig three years ago, and it's coming apart. Somebody's going to fall, and the elderly, if they fall and break a hip on our property, and we know about this. So why does it even have to go to a committee? Let's have a consensus to add it to the agenda, find the money and replace this. You know, it sits in committee, and we waste time, and it just makes no sense. We all know it needs to be repaired or now replaced. So leisure committee to talk about it needing to be replaced? We know it needs to be replaced. DPW has to put a current number on it so we can put it on the agenda and vote whether or not you guys want to fund it. We all say we support the seniors. And I'll go even as far as to say, let's take the $125,000 from the senior loan or volunteer loan program that is completely abused by people who have more money than they know what to do with versus what the intent of the program was for people who were falling on tough times. But we got to move forward on these things. You know, Bob, you made your comment about, you know, the town needs to finish projects. I agreed to help you get Powder Hollow done. Now you turn around and say we should be paying to finish the project when you agreed to find donators.
Not here to argue, Ken, or any of that.
So I'm not asking it to go to leisure. I'm asking for DPW to put, give me permission to have staff put a number on the pickleball courts, and we can bring it to the council, and you guys can say yes or no. It's simple. Do I have consensus to do that?
My question, Ken, to that is, is there, if there was a guarantee on those courts...
He's out of business. He's gone. He won't return phone calls.
Okay.
Yep. And that was only for the repairs, Bob.
Yeah.
So what he repaired...
He's out of...
They can't get ahold of him now. At first, he started, because I know it's been talked about.
Then bring it forward. I have no issue with that.
I have consensus, so if we can add that to DPW's agenda, please, I'd appreciate it. And then last, Pam, Lucian, Kelly, to thank you, to me, is so trivial. I see what you guys do. You keep the memory of so many people who are no longer with us alive, and a simple thank you is not good enough in my eyes. I don't know what to do other than to be there and support you every single step of the way, because it's people like you that allow us to sit here and, you know, have these little bickering back and forth, but you fought for our rights to do that, and I could never thank you enough. I mean, it just seems trivial. Reefs Across America, again, absolutely a beautiful ceremony. The parade's Lucian. It's just, I don't think people understand what goes on behind the scenes for you guys to pull this off. So from the bottom of my heart, I personally thank you as a human being in the town of Enfield for everything you guys do throughout the entire year to keep the memory of our veterans alive. Thank you very much. Everybody, have a very Merry Christmas and, you know, a great New Years. And I say that because I celebrate Christmas. It's the most valued holiday there is. If you celebrate Hanukkah, you know, and you tell me, Happy Hanukkah, I'm going to take that as the top blessing you can give me. So I'm done. Oh, wait, I'm running the meeting. I got to move on. Sorry. Town managers, report and communications.
Good evening, everybody. Happy holidays as well, so I don't forget. First, a couple of issues. One, in mentioning Lucian and Pam and their good work, I received a call this morning from Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz, and she also started the conversation by saying, we all know in Connecticut how patriotic Enfield is. And what she, her initiative and the governor's been, and they did it once before, was to recognize, starting with the World War II vets, and then they moved forward. Well, they want to do it again because they are a diminishing resource to our country. There are fewer and fewer every year. So I've passed that on to Sheila. There's ways they're going to glean the names from our prior list, also those who receive a tax credit. And also, she mentioned Lucian. He's going to bring it to the Veterans Council to spread the word, and we'll put it on our websites to say, hey, anybody who has, you know, a family member that served, if they'd like to come and be recognized. It'll be in May, but we'll be working towards that to get as many people recognized from Enfield as we possibly can. I have an update, Donald Nunes, on the Simon Road, the sewer issue that we've been dealing with. As difficult an issue it is, they're doing superlative work. He gave me an update to indicate that they, as of today, replaced quite a number of feet of piping on Simon Road today. It has been backfilled and plated. Paving of the trench will take place this Wednesday, and cleaning will start tomorrow. He said it was very successful indeed, and he'll continue to keep us posted. Having said that, we started a bit of an experiment, at least from my point of view, of trying to give more information out through more social media. Steve's going to address the larger part of that. But, you know, I've heard this evening concerns about ARPA funds, and, you know, there are rules about ARPA. I would recommend people go to our website. They did a beautiful job of explaining where all of the ARPA money has gone to date that we received, and it's just a great presentation. Heatheren from Finance did it, so I again endorse it to anybody to go and look and see what's occurred. There have been rules as to how you can spend the ARPA. We have a couple of matters on tonight. The deadline for encumbering the money and contractually committing it has to be done by December 31st. So we have only about a week. Well, given Christmas, this is our last opportunity to do that housekeeping. I will tell you, there were specific rules about ARPA. You can't just put it in your general fund. You just can't use it to offset operating costs as much as we'd like to do it. They specifically had rules as to how you could expend it, and we have followed them. We're down to the last of it. There's one transfer of $23,000 that we'll be addressing, that Michael added to the agenda. But what I'd like to tell you is, we all have opinions as to how our economic development should proceed. All that I can tell you is it's really a function of the market, and those who are willing to come in and determine that there's a need based upon their studies and their marketing and say, this is the place we want to be. Well, we've been quite fortunate in the last, last couple of years, actually, the last year in particular, that we've had great interest in the Enfield Square project. I understand it's not everybody's cup of tea, but I haven't had anybody else come to my office that has the credentials to spend 250 to 300 million into our town. If anybody knows of somebody else, please let me know. We're working hard. The river, I've worked on for a number of years, and we're going to see a highlight reel of the governor's visit here, where they awarded us $4 million in brownfield to clean that up. I share, and I've heard, and Councilor Santinella and others have said, town attorney, I'd love to live in a condo on the river. They're not building condos anymore. We've had great in-depth conversations with the developers. They're not in vogue anymore. Younger people, they want apartments, and we have a preconceived notion of what apartments are. These are quite different. These are market value 80%, 20% is workforce, so that we have a place for those working families moving up with their children to live. But 80% is market value. I can tell you, the rents, if you look at Mayfield and you look at their building, these apartments, the rents are 2,500 to 4,500 a month, and they are sold out before they build them. So we have to be cognizant of, developers are going to come and build what the people want, and they don't want single-family houses as much, and they don't want condos. What I can tell you is, I've heard from many, and we have realtors on the council, that some retired folks and seniors, they don't want their home anymore, but they want to be in Enfield and be with their grandchildren. They want an apartment. They don't even want a condo. They just want to go and have the amenities. So we have to be cognizant, you know, we, they're only going to build and invest for those things that people are interested in. We have, and I have raised a concern about children in the schools precisely because of that. So we've looked at that issue, because when you build it, they will come, and they will come to your schools. But we have to understand, Thompsonville was in dire straits. Something had to be done, much like the schools. So we're trying to be inclusive, we're trying to be fair to everyone, but we have to understand that developers and people who are investing, they do it on the basis of their market studies. And I'll just share with you from LLB, and I've said it before, and the square, we're one of the places that people want to be, where businesses want to be, where apartments want to be built, and where people want to come. So that's what we're responding to, and I think we're doing it in a very responsible manner. I will tell you, and it's interesting, and it's another bit of good news, the Enfield Square, on the same day the governor came for the visit, we were awarded $4 million for the river. We were also awarded $4 million for Enfield Square. One day, $8 million to Enfield, out of 18 awards around the state. That one's contingent upon, we just submitted the CIF, the Community Infrastructure Plan for the square. We reduced it from 20 million, cognizant of the feedback we got from the state and from the governor himself, to 10 million. This grant for the brownfield, the state knows what they're doing, too, in economic development. So it's sort of a carrot and a stick, too. They said, we've awarded you the 4 million in brownfield, it's there, but let's see what happens with the CIF. We want to see your plan, and it's good for a year, and then we'll award it. So I'm telling you, I think we're doing a very good job with economic development in this town, and I'm trying to get the good news out. I appreciate all the comments. I respect Nikki's opinion and Bob's and Lori Longy. They've been here a long time, they know what they're talking about, and we do try to consider everything that all of our residents have to share. But I'm showing you this highlight reel because it's part of our public relations firm, our marketing, to let the residents know what we're doing. So what we did that day, we livestreamed the governor's visit. We had a couple hundred people watch that couldn't be there. Maybe they're in Mark Twain, maybe they're disabled. We're going to take that out. This is the format we're going to follow. It was on, we streamlined it, but we also filmed it on ETV very professionally. That's now on the website. We immediately post the pictures with the links, and then we do a highlight reel, so people can see a minute or two of what happened. And if you're interested, go to the link and watch the whole meeting. So Steve's going to address, and he'll tell you some of the numbers of the response we're getting since we've done this over the last couple of weeks. Before I show this, I want to give kudos to Sheila Bailey, because in trying to get the information out, you know that people are stealing other persons' homes around the state. And we had a program that we rolled out. We were really the first, but we had to push it one meeting, but Sheila was ahead of the curve. And we put it out there on all of our social media, and it was, you know, very, very editorial in telling you what you could do. No one contacted her. So at our directors' meeting, we said, well, why is that? What do you think we could do better? So we talked, and Sheila came up with this, and I, does Alex have this picture?
Yes.
This is what we put up the end of last week. Her son drew it, and Sheila, you've had a response now, haven't you?
I have. We have. We, just in the last few days, we've gotten a dozen households to sign up. I would like to see a lot more, but I have to give Chris the credit for this, because in our meeting, when I expressed my frustration of having difficulty getting the word out, he said, Sheila, we've got to do it simple, to the point, and something eye-catching. He goes, I want a robber running off with a house with the caption, don't let this happen to you. So there we are.
Well, it takes, it's a group effort, but I tell you, we just don't give up, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's what we're going to show you now, the highlight reel. Those who are interested can then go and see, and we're going to continue the good news. Steve's going to have an update just to tell you the amount of people who are responding and following us now. With that, Alice, could you please show our highlight reel of the...
We keep coming back here because I think Enfield gets it right. It really does take a village, especially to revitalize one. You know, today, these deals are very complicated and complex, and when you have partners in the public sector that you can really count on to share and develop a vision, you know, together, I think that's everything a developer could ask for.
There has been nothing but support since the first day that we walked in and presented this concept to Mayor and Chris Bromson and this amazing team of professionals as well.
To be able to attract private developers using the tools the state and town have, open up many opportunities to turn around Thompsonville.
Look at this beautiful space, the way it is now, and just in probably a few years, it'll be just a welcoming gateway for Connecticut on this north-south corridor that we have here, and it's just frankly amazing.
I'm looking at Cindy here and Chris Bromson that have been here for over a quarter century in public service, and we go back many years, but this vision of the waterfront was Mary Lou Strom's vision over a quarter century ago.
Each of you here in Enfield, I'm so proud of what we're able to do together to liberate this piece of property, this beautiful piece of property overlooking the river, and what it means in terms of the bigger picture we got for the state of Connecticut. That's why we're here today. A lot to celebrate.
Thank you. And then Steve has something to add as well.
Thank you. About a month and a half ago, a couple of months ago, the town manager came to us and said, you know, we need a more robust platform to start getting out the word. There's a lot of positive things happening in town, but we got to let people know about it. And so we brought in the right people, and it's really a consortium of people that have the skill sets that, unfortunately, Chris and I don't have that, Instagram, Facebook, but we didn't get people on board. But we didn't get people on board. And some of the numbers that we're getting, when the research across America was unfortunately canceled, we had 7,000 hits of people just realizing that. We got the word out quick, and they knew immediately. The torchlight parade, 2,500 hits from Facebook. People that couldn't see it went to Facebook and saw, we had Stephanie go there, and she posted a lot of the pictures. The Business Breakfast, we posted. The Veterans Day Parade, we livestreamed that. People were like, "Wow, I couldn't get out. I couldn't see it, but now I got to see it." So every day, we're getting better at this. It's still new. We got the skill sets we need. And it's just a matter of refining and recommitting to this effort because it's coming back tenfold. People are grateful. They are learning more about their town every day.
And I appreciate that, Stephen. When he says we brought the right people, they're all on staff. They're people that we currently have who want to do this, and we're utilizing them. We brought in Windsor because they have a really, I think, they're ahead of the curve on marketing. And they came, and their manager and their staff to help and share with us. And one thing we're going to be kicking off, I'm going to talk about it tomorrow's meeting at the directors' meeting. You know, we've done police academies. Windsor does a full-town department academy where they go in and they say, "This is your Public Works." When we're talking about, "What is it like to take a ride on a plow in a snowstorm? Or what is it like to really go pick up garbage in Thompsonville?" Well, we're going to show the residents, and we're going to let them see it. And we're going to start with a couple of departments this year. And then we'll lead to perhaps a citizens' academy where people actually come in and participate. But for now, we're going to film it, and we're going to share it. And I'm very happy that Cindy Guerrieri is reaching out to a lot of our homes in town and the Housing Authority so that we can livestream and play for our people who aren't able to come out, all of the concerts, all of the parades, so they can fully integrate and be part of this great town. So I'm very happy with where we're at, and we'll keep you posted moving forward. I think that's all I had.
Questions? Seeing none, I only have one, and I just want to stress enough. I can't stress enough. What Sheila presented with trying to protect our homes, I don't think people understand the scope of what's going on in this country. You could be sitting home one day, and all of a sudden, you open your mail, and you got a foreclosure notice. And you're like, "Well, that can't be right. I don't have a mortgage." Well, somebody stole your house through paperwork, and now you do. And this is an alert system that will notify you immediately if somebody's playing with the deed on your home. So this is a very big issue. I know for a fact somebody who it happened to, and their house is in foreclosure right now. And it is, you know, prove it was forgery, prove this and this. And this was a year later because you don't know it happened. So what she is offering the residents of Enfield, take advantage of it because you will be so sorry. I figure, what's it take, five, 10 minutes to sign up for it? And, you know, it's going to take you...
It's as simple as just entering your email address and your name and your spouse's name.
And just so you know too, Mr. Mayor, because it's so important that, you know, those who have perhaps elderly family members or a single-family member, family members' children can sign up for it out of town so that they can be aware of it when you know that even if they get the notice, your parent might not really understand the significance of it.
Right. And I know people just, you know, oh, yeah, you know. They don't understand how important that is to the future of their home. So again, take the two minutes and look at it and sign up. It's the best thing you could do for your real property. Town attorneys report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cut down my report tonight to only 45 minutes, so I'm sure you'll all be pleased to hear that. In all seriousness, I only have two items. One is that through public participation, I think it was Mr. Prokowsky mentioned Mark Serrato. And Mark deserves a tremendous amount of credit for the burden that he's absorbed since Maria retired about five years ago, and then Maria came back on a part-time basis. But for the last year, she has not been here, and he's taken over a lot of the land use cases. We've also emphasized a very aggressive way of trying to resolve non-litigatively land use issues before they even become issues in court. Once they get to court, we've tried to do mediation. It's been very successful. And Mark, though, has now ended up, for instance, on Friday, he tried a case, a land use case. And then here tonight, he was at executive session. And then afterwards, he's at the ZBA to resolve another case that went through mediation. So he's been working heavily on that. And hopefully later on the agenda, we can get some more assistance so we don't wear him out. And secondly, Councilman and former Mayor Crisati mentioned Peter King. And I'd like to offer the town attorney's assistance into the council and especially Councilman Crisati about brainstorming to come up with some way to more appropriately recognize the contribution that Peter King has made, not just with this, but with his family and his whole career. Being an Enfield native, his father, I believe, was signed with the Boston Red Sox, Lefty King. And you've got to be as old as I am to remember him. So, and Peter has really created a mark that Enfield, a lot of Enfield people don't know about, but Bob will be happy to work with you to come up with a way to more appropriately recognize him as well as maybe have some permanent way of having the kids coming up through school know and take great pride in Enfield. In the meantime, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Right, you don't want to add? Okay, so reports to special committees? Bob?
Okay, I just have one announcement, just to let everybody know that Charter Revision Committee or Commission met last week. And this is a reminder that there's going to be a public hearing Wednesday night on the 18th at 6:30 right here in the council chambers and to submit public input on suggestions for revisions to the Enfield Town Charter. The meeting will be streamed on YouTube, just to let everybody know. A copy of the Enfield Town Charter is available in the town clerk's office for public inspection, or you can go on the town website, take a look at it. For those unable to attend the public hearing in person, Enfield electors or taxpayers may submit written testimony stating your name and address to thecharterrevisioncomments@enfield.org by midnight Wednesday, December 18th. Sheila, I hope I said all that correctly. And we look forward to seeing people on Wednesday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And I also echo Bob on that. And I want to thank whoever made the sign out front. It's nice to see that, and it's been out there a while. So was that you, Sheila?
I didn't make it. I just asked his guys to put it up.
So it's the results of your actions, so thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, moving on to unfinished business. Resolution amending the property maintenance ordinance. We are leaving that table as we do not have the updated documents tonight. They're still working on them. Next is 14 new business.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. So there were a number of items on leadership agenda that were under the consent agenda, which we moved off. But I believe tonight, we have consensus for several of them. So I'm going to move that we move items C, D, E, F, I, J, and L to the consent agenda.
And I second that. Motion's made and seconded. Any questions?
Sorry, could you say the number?
Certainly. C, D, E, F, I, J, and L. Councilor Ludwig, L is the document that we just substituted for you. And if I could just add a comment. So just for the public's benefit, there are just some nominal dollar amounts associated with these things and some administrative things.
I want to clarify, John, L is not the document Mike added.
Oh, I apologize then.
Okay, so L is okay to leave on consent. But I just want to be clear, it's not what Mike added.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, so that's it. So again, C, D, E, F, I, J, and L.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Thank you, John.
We have to now approve the consent agenda. We have to now, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we have to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to, sorry. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Last I checked, that was my job. All right, thank you. Motion's made and seconded. Thank you, John. All in favor of consent? Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you again, John. Next is the appointment a town council appointed, the Enfield Town Constable. A vacancy exists to the resignation of Zachary Zanoni, Democrat, on 10/7/2024. Replacement will be Rebecca Helpin, Democrat, until 11/18/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything you want to add?
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations. It's unanimous. And roll call, please.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Nissuta?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Rebecca Helpin.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
And Councilor Russo?
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you. So C, D, E, and F were moved and approved already. So we are on G, which is a resolution adopting the revised Deputy Director Operations Job Description. You want to go ahead, Steve, while I look for this? Oh, I got it.
Yes, we've had this position vacant since June, and we're not attracting a lot of candidates. So we were troubleshooting, and we realized that this job description, unlike the other Deputy Director Job Description in Public Works, has a mandatory four-year educational requirement. We are requesting to relax that provision and make it highly preferable, but a combination of education, experience, and training that will allow us to attract a broader pool of candidates to fill this position.
Thank you. Any questions? Council, Deputy Mayor Pisner?
There's just one thing we did discuss, and it was to say it would be and/or on the change. And it still says or there, Steve. Remember, we discussed that in leadership, and it was going to be and/or.
Correct. I can fix that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to remind you, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, since the actual description is not part of the agenda, the resolution, we're okay to.
Okay.
All right. So the resolution adopting the revised Deputy Director Operations Job Description. It's recommended the town council approve the revised Deputy Director Operations Job Description. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve the revised Deputy Director Operations Job Description. Date prepared, 12/10/2024. Prepared by Stephen Belinda, Assistant Town Manager. Motion's made and seconded. Councilman Ludwig.
This is the mayor to Steve. Steve, sorry, just clarification. It says highly, I agree with the change. I mean, I agree. What is highly experienced? Is there, do you define it, or is it subjective to the HR director? I'm just saying, reading in the description of the resolution, it says, is there a specific year you're looking for experience? Or are you, I'm just curious, are you leaving it up for the, within the job descriptions?
Is it an experience in training part?
Yeah. So again, not disagreeing at all. But if you don't have a four-year degree, is there a certain amount of years of experience you're looking for?
It would be equivalent. So a four-year degree, if you don't have that, then it'd be nine years.
I got it. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, through the mayor to Mr. Belinda, just a quick question. I know that this position has been open. Have you been getting applications for people that are not qualified wanting this position? Is this the main reason why we're doing this?
We have received some applications, but I would look through it to see if they're worth even pursuing. And some of them have not been, so we collectively. It's a three-pronged process. The Director of Public Works, myself, and then the Deputy Director, we look at these and we scrutinize them. Some of them, they think they have the experience we're looking for, but they don't. Some of them have the education, but no experience. So we're being critical in what we're looking for.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Yep. Good. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Thank you. The next one is a resolution to authorize a waiver of property maintenance fines for 16 Fairlane Road. The town council approves this resolution if they desire to waive the current property maintenance fines at 16 Fairlane Road. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize a waiver of the $62,472 in property maintenance fines at 16 Fairlane Road. Date prepared 12/6/2024, prepared by Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. John, you want to take this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an action coming from the Blight Committee, which we reviewed last week. This particular individual actually came in, met with us for a considerable amount of time, explained his unique life situation and some of the challenges that he has had. There was a period of time where he was not living in the home, where a lot of this blight became problematic for the neighbors. He has since moved back into the home. He has maintained the property. He has addressed a lot of the personal issues that kind of got him into trouble, and the property has been without incident for a period of three years. And so we really felt that this individual has done everything in his power to make this right, and so the committee recommends approving this modification.
Thank you, John. So this is a success story. We're not foreclosing on his house. He received the foreclosure letter. He called immediately. He just figured if he took care of his property, it would go away. It didn't. He came in, and like John said, he was honest, and he told us what went down. I'm not going to get into it. But without the town doing anything, for three years, this property, sewer bills are paid, taxes are paid, the house has been upkept. That's what we want. That's all we're asking for of residents. So the committee voted unanimous to waive all the fines. So we're hoping you support this tonight. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Thank you very much. The next one is a resolution to transfer funds for an additional assistant town attorney. Here we go. So the recommendation is the Enfield Town Council approve the following resolution. Be resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund, non-departmental charges, transfers out and contingency, contingency of $70,883 to General Fund, Town Attorney. Salary $51,009.25, health insurance $14,800, life insurance $81, social security $3,324, and Medicare $753. Date prepared 12/12/24, prepared by the Town Manager's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So any questions? Councilman Santinella.
No, I just want to say, you know, I really strongly support this position. It's clear that the amount of work that is going through the Town Attorney's Office is just, it's exponential, it's increased exponentially, and they need help. It's not that they're not doing their jobs, they just, they need help, we need extra help. And I think that, you know, just the reality, we have somebody who may be close to retirement, and it's, I think, in our best interest to put somebody in now for the purposes of succession planning, so that we don't have somebody retire and there be nobody there. So I fully support this, and I think the Town Attorney's Office does a really great job, and they need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. No budget impact. How can that be? It's $70,000. Oh, my goodness. I'm on the wrong side here.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
So that's my first question.
John is going to address that. We probably, this is for the remainder of this year. The salary, it's a union position, so it's set by contract, it's about $124,000 a year. We won't even be able to fill it, probably. We won't even expend this amount of money. It'll just build up, but John can address where it's coming from. But I imagine by the time we go out and do interviews and get somebody, it's going to be a couple or three or four months. What I'll add before John, so I can just go once, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Santinella, took the words out of my mouth. We've always had that amount of attorneys since I was here as the town attorney. We had two assistants, very capable, and we've been operating with only one. And as you know, just given the incredible increase in economic development and purchasing and selling properties, they're overwhelmed. And this is one thing, to John's point earlier about savings, you know, will we get that reflected in the bond because we're going to have revenue offsetting it? I can assure you that we will save this amount of money and what we are spending for outside counsel to do the cases that we now have to refer out. All the closings are being referred out, some land use, this will come back, and we will save money by having this attorney on staff. John?
Okay. This question, the budget impact, I've always read it as being the current budget. That's what's adopted right now. So for this year, we budgeted $300,000 for contingencies, things that come up during the year that are unknown at the budget time. Remember, we're developing a budget in February and March for the following year, which, for the following fiscal year, which we can't know everything that's going to come up. So from that perspective, we're moving money out of that contingency account into these salary line items for this year, yeah. So there would be no impact for this year. Future years, there would be an impact on that.
And we'll include it in next year's budget, but I think it will take us a few months to get a qualified person. Again, we're going to be concentrating on somebody with real estate experience and land use, because those are the areas that we really have a lot of work currently.
So my second part of the question is, is this a more cost-effective plan than hiring out on, like we had with Maria?
Well, Maria was a staff attorney.
But then she retired, and then we got her...
I think you kept her for a period of time. Her salary was reduced. Well, this person will be getting basically the same pay as her, because she was under the union contract. As you know, this probably, I don't know, John would have to do the work, this probably transfers out, I don't know how much an hour, you could do the math, but it's probably, I would say, you know, you know what we're paying for outside counsel, from $350 an hour to maybe $450, and we get a municipal rate. So if you just figured, you know, $300, 40 hours a week, what are you talking each week? It's going to far exceed, or in savings, what we're expending out right now. In-house is much more affordable than hiring an outside law firm. And sometimes you have to for specialty work, but for this type of work, which is routine, an in-house lawyer would be more than capable of handling it.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Bob?
Yeah. When I first saw this, you know, I think what immediately came into my mind, this needs to be a budget item, you know, and, you know, as long as we're going to address this in the upcoming budget, to put this in as a full-time position, that I'm good with that, you know, so.
And what I'll remind you of, when we did the budget last time, I said we were trying to have perhaps Maria come back, and she's actually going to come back as a consultant to do just a seminar or two a year to our land use boards, but that's a very small amount. She was not interested, she's retired, she's very happy, but what I, yeah, unlike some others who, well, so in any event, to your point, during the budget, we did have excess money from her that we put into the general, so we did budget for it, and I had said we're anticipating in the next budget replacing it. So we've always had it, we had the placeholder, whatever money was left, I think 30 or 40 grand, and so let's put it into general, and we've spent it in outside counsel, but we will address it during the budget, and it will be in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's not a new position, we're just funding, oh, okay. Yep. Yep. Any other questions? I want to thank you, Chris. I know for three to four months, you've been talking about this. You did everything you could do to try to help, and it's just down to the wire where I told you, just put it on the agenda. So this is no reflection on Mark Serrato, I think he does a phenomenal job. Tom, you do a great job, but this town is big, we have a ton of real estate things going on that we did not have going on, so things have changed, and we adjust as we go along. So I want to thank you for that, Chris. Roll call.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. The next one is a resolution to rescind the transfer of funds for the four-pack, Moody Road, Pheasant Hill, Taylor Road, and Windsor Court Pump Station.
That was part of the consent.
That one went to consent.
That was not, I'm sorry, that was not, the mayor told me that this was, I took that off, so.
We left it on.
Okay, you let, no, 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 no. Hold on. So they're right, this is, but this other one for 485 is not. All right, so thank you, guys. All right, so that's that.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we left L on the consent agenda.
Right, so now we're on to M, which would be what Mike has added, and this is a request for transfer of funds for the four-pack, Moody Road, Pheasant Hill, Taylor Road, and Windsor Court Pump Stations, $485,543. Additional funds are needed to complete the above referenced pump stations. A bid for the four-pack pump stations was opened on 12/6/2024. The lowest base bid was $2,484,777. Funds available in Water Pollution Control Fund that will allow us to complete this project. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Water Pollution Control Fund, appropriate fund balance $485,543 to Water Pollution Control Fund, transfer to capital $485,543.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. So this is just adjusting, what's that? Oh. Oh. Why is it double? Two from, and then from Water Pollution Control, CNR Fund, WPC Capital Fund Reserve, transfer in $485,543 to Water Pollution Control, CNR Fund, four-pack pump station construction services, $485,543.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Marie. That was a good catch, I didn't even see it. So this is actually moving the money that we just undid from the right account to fund this project. So no project got stopped, it was just a clerical error, we straightened it out. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila, and then now we are on to N, which is a request for transfer to real, reallocate ARPA funds from the Thompsonville Bike Path to Grape Brook Pump Station, $23,150. I'm going to read this, because this is new on the agenda. This, Mike added this earlier.
We don't have it.
You don't have it? Nobody has it? So I'm going to...
We'll explain it, it was the last minute with John, and we didn't want to lose.
That's why I'm going to read the whole thing first.
Yeah, and we'll explain it.
So the highlights are, the town appropriated $100,000 of ARPA funds for the design services for the Thompsonville Bike Path. A total of $76,850 has been encumbered to date. There is significant uncertainty over whether this project will be completed. These funds can be reallocated to the Grape Brook Pump Station project. There will be no budget impact. The recommendation is the town council approved the attached resolution. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from COVID-19 Funds, Thompsonville Bike Path, Other Professional Services of $23,150 to COVID-19 Fund, Grape Brook Pump Station Construction Services of $23,150. Date prepared 12/16/2024, prepared by John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to have the resolution in front of me, number one, thank you for reading it, and secondly, I would make an assumption that this is budget neutral, is that correct?
No, this is... Perhaps I could just address, and maybe it'll answer the questions that everyone would have.
Who?
I said perhaps I could just answer, maybe if I could just tell you what it's about. Christie's here, I don't know that we want to get off on this path tonight, but I wonder about this project sometimes. I wonder if sometimes things are blessed and sometimes things are cursed. This may be the latter. There's been a lot of, I think, opposition to this project, uncertainty to it. When I returned, nothing had happened in two years, and in the last year, quite frankly, once we got a new director on, and Christie, they tracked this down. Residents are quite concerned about this bike path being there, them having to maintain it, given the width. The real upshot, though, and why it's on tonight, and we apologize, but John realized it over the, basically over the weekend or the end of last week, that we had this $23,000 left. Again, we can't spend it on this project, we can't encumber it, we can't do a contract to spend it in time, so we'd like it to go to the pump station, because there's some additional costs there that they could be used for. It doesn't doom the project, it's a low SIP grant, really, it's kind of one of these hybrids that Public Works would make sure we do it well if we do it, but it's really economic development to oversee it. Christie informs me that they, errant to his credit, still wanted to track it down to ground, so we've talked to architect and others to address the concerns of the residents to see if they could be addressed, and that the project might still have an ability to go forward, but we can't do it in time. So this money will go back to the, so we don't lose it from the federal government. Christie thinks even if we had to, and I would come to you with what the consultant or the architect is recommending, she thinks probably the cost, if we wanted to engage it and get that opinion, would be around $5,000 or $6,000. So if we had to, we can appropriate the money later. This doesn't put the nail in the coffin of the project, it simply says, there's $23,000 left from the initial 100 that you spent already, and we can't spend it in time. So with all of those reasons, I hope that answers your questions. Nothing definitive is, you're not dooming the project or giving it a green light. It's big, there's a lot of moving parts. We'll update you in a month to see if in fact the architect has any other ideas and what it would cost to retain him, or we could take it from another source. So that's what it is. Thumbnail sketch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, through our mayor, through our town manager. So am I to understand that this money is low SIP grant money?
No, this first 100,000 you appropriated for ARPA to look into it and do the study, and they spent about 70-some thousand. The low SIP grant remains untouched at this juncture until we approve it and have a design that they agree with, and I know the council wants to make sure the residents do. So all of that will still be looked at, we'll report back to you. It's just this money would have been swept back up by the government, and we can use it for other good use at this point.
So this money is going to be parked, essentially?
Well, it's going, others earlier said, let's spend the ARPA money on a sewer project, so this is a small amount going towards Grapevine, because they have some expenses there that we could use. So it's going to be used for that purpose.
So if we don't...
Do this tonight, we'll forfeit the money.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you know, I think $23,000 is a lot of money, so we didn't want that to happen.
All said, Cindy?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nisuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
And Councilor Russo.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
And I want to thank John Wilcox for finding that. I mean, that's a nice $25,000 fine that we would have lost, so thank you, John. Next is items for discussion. Seeing none. Any other business proper to come before said meeting? Seeing none. Public Communications, anyone willing to come up? Nikki?
Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. Something was concerning at the town planning and zoning meeting of December 5. First of all, I just want to say, I think it's great that the train station's coming in, you're doing the projects around the train station, and the whole purpose is that these people will have a access to commuter transit, mass transportation. So it was kind of alarming that, I hope I pronounced this right, Woodsonia, okay, developers came in to present their plans for the groundbreaking and what they were going to do. So one of the commissioners brought up the commuter parking lot. He, Mitch, what was his name? Mitch Holen said absolutely not, they're not going to put a commuter parking lot there, which to me was like, wait a minute, you're going to have all those people there, isn't a bus line, like a train line, for commuter parking? And then all those people who are using it right now, they don't realize that this is not going to be there anymore for them. And so once they realize that it's gone, they're going to be up in arms. So I just thought that, that you should realize, he was emphatic, a resounding no, when he said, no, there was not going to be a commuter parking lot on that site. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Merry Christmas.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Councilman Communications, seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Merry Christmas, everyone.